I'd like to call this meeting in the Westland City Council order. We will begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Michael Londo.
The Pledge of Allegiance. ... of the United States of America, and the Republic which is standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for announcements and presentations tonight.
Roll call.
Oh, excuse me. Roll call, thank you.
Councilman Godbough.
President.
Councilwoman Green.
President.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Londo.
Here.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Here.
President Hart.
Here.
Acquorum, Ms. President.
Now, for announcements and presentations, we'll turn it over to the mayor. I think we have some Halloween decoration awardees to recognize.
We do. First of all, good evening, everyone, and thanks for coming out tonight. We had a pretty big agenda tonight, so we've got a pretty, pretty nice-looking crowd. So we wanted to take a few minutes tonight to recognize some Westland residents that really went over and above and beyond for their Halloween decorations this year. And, you know, Halloween wasn't quite what it normally is for our kids this year, but I think that because of some of the restrictions, that people really spent a lot of time on decorations this year. So I was glad to see that the Neighborhood Service Department took some time out to honor those with the contest. And tonight, we have three winners, and I believe that all three of them are with us here tonight. And we're going to, up on these screens here, we're going to try to show you what their houses look like, too. So the first, well, first of all, there was a nomination process where you could go on and nominate yourself or a friend online. And we had quite a few nominations. There were three categories: Best Autumn Display, Best Spooky Display, and our favorite, the Over-the-Top. And we have several honorable mentions as well, because we really had some good submissions this year. But the first one was, and when I say your name before we're finished, if you can come step forward, we actually have a certificate for you on behalf of the City of Westland. And then if you step out in the hallway before you leave, our photographer, Craig, here from WLND, is going to take a photo of you, and we'll share that on social media. But the first one was the Best Autumn Display, and the winner was Bob Robleski. And you can look up at the screen, you can see Bob's display. Bob, you step forward, we have something here for you. Yep. We usually do a lot more, but this is what we can do tonight. So first of all, thank you. I think you guys have won before.
No.
No? This is your first time? All right, well, you guys did a great job.
Well, I just listened to what she tells me to do.
Well, the good news is in about another week, we're going to announce the Christmas decoration contest. All right. Awesome. All right, thank you, thank you. So the next one is the 2020 Best Spooky Display, and the winner was Josh and Randy Madden. Take a look at this house. Pretty good, huh? Great job, guys, and we understand that you are related to somebody that spent a lot of time in the City of Westland, your former HR Director, Keith Madden. All right. I can see the resemblance. All right, we'll hear you guys go. Congratulations, great job. All right, nice to meet you. All right, then this is the one that we really love, is the 2020 Best Over-the-Top Display. And this year, hands down, the winner was by far Will and Shelley Dorr. Take a look at their house. All right, you guys did a great job. Congratulations. Can we count on you for the Christmas decorations?
That's right.
All right, okay, well, thank you. And then we just want to recognize, for honorable mentions, we have the following: Gary Butler, Rhonda Graham, Bridget Harpster, Matthew Sarna, Matthew Smith, Melinda Schmidt, and Richard Walsh. Let's give everybody one more big round of applause. Thank you.
All right, our next announcement and presentation, I think, goes back to you, Mayor, for the announcement of the DEI Board.
Yeah, thank you, City Council.
... Council President, that's not on our agenda.
It's announcement and presentation.
City Council has to vote on...
No, they don't. You're incorrect. It's an appointment from the mayor.
We vote on mayoral appointments.
Not on this commission, no.
We have voted, we're voting on mayoral appointments on other commissions, and you're saying that this is the, this will be the commission.
Councilwoman, you're out of order. This board and commission is appointed by the mayor.
So are the other ones on our agenda. So can you please clarify what regulation that you're quoting that we don't have to approve these seats?
It's in the resolution that we passed, Councilwoman.
No, it's not.
You're out of order.
No, you all are creating rules for a...
Councilwoman, you're out of order.
This is not standard procedure.
Councilwoman, you're out of order.
I'm not out of order.
You are out of order.
But go ahead with this, whatever you're doing tonight.
Ladies and gentlemen, I apologize. Mayor?
All right, well, thank you, City Council. So tonight, I'm proud to announce that we have filled the positions of the newly-created Diversity Equity and Inclusion, the DEI Commission. I remind you, Council, the DEI Commission was created as a result of the resolution passed by City Council in August of 2020 declaring racism is a public health crisis. The Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission is governed by a seven-member board and two alternate members that are appointed by the mayor. Members serve a three-year term, except of those first appointed. So since everyone's going to be freshly appointed here, we will have three members serving a three-year term, three members serving a two-years term, one for a one-year term, and both the alternates will also serve a one-year term.
Not during presentation.
The members must reside in the City of Westland. Current city officials or employees were not eligible for appointment. The commission's goal was to be made up with, was to be representative of the city's diverse population. The DEI Commission will meet quarterly, or as they deem necessary. The DEI Commission promotes, supports, and advocates for the vision and values around diversity, equity, and inclusion at all levels of the city's organization. Their goal will be to identify barriers to achieving greater diversity, equal opportunity, and an inclusive environment, and they will provide recommendations on how to overcome those barriers. The commission is to work to create an equity and justice, create justice-oriented organization, with the commission identifying specific activities to increase diversity and to incorporate anti-racism principles across our membership, leadership, staffing, and contracting. And the charge that I just read was right out of the resolution. Council, I had made a commitment to you to name the commission members within 90 days. We did do that. We gave you a list of the applicants prior to November 1st, and tonight, I'm going to recognize them. I'm not positive if everybody made it here tonight. I did try to work it out with everybody to be here. So I'm going to read off their names and just a little bit about them, and then perhaps when I'm saying their name, we can get them to stand up, and then we'll recognize them all at the end. The first appointment was Ms. Elnora Ford. Ms. Ford is a longtime resident and has served on the City of Westland's Commission on Aging for nearly 20 years. Mrs. Ford is a member of the Southeast Homeowners Association. She serves on the board at her church and is the past State Secretary for the NAACP. The next appointment was Ms. Lena Nichols. Ms. Nichols has lived in the city since 1957 and raised four children here. Ms. Nichols served on the PTA when her children were in school, as well as being on the Board of Directors for the Methodist Children's Home Society. Ms. Nichols retired from Ford Motor Company, where she began her career as an hourly employee and worked her way up to a product process analyst. The next appointee was Mr. Arthur Warren. He's been a resident of Westland for 44 years. He currently serves as president on the City of Westland's Community Development Citizens' Advisory Council. He's the current president of the Southeast Homeowners Association, and he's also the current president of the Westland Democratic Club. The next appointee was Ms. Angela Remmel. Ms. Remmel's been a resident nearly her entire life. Angela has a master's degree in industrial and organizational psychology. Angela is a foster care and adoption director, where a major aspect of her position is maintaining high levels of satisfaction for the company and employee through the company's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. The next appointment is Ms. Fabiola Sanchez Santos. She's a certified instructor for Zumba Gold. Fabiola has taught Zumba to the members of the Westland Friendship Center since July of 2019. Fabiola was a buyer clerk for a company in Mexico for eight years and a bilingual executive administrative assistant. The next appointee is Ms. Denise Sedman, who is now retired after spending 37 years in advertising and public relations. Ms. Sedman served as the Director of Public Relations for GM Fleet and Commercial Division, Executive Director and co-founder of Automation Alley, and Marketing Coordinator for Oakland County Business Development and Planning Division, supporting economic development. Ms. Sedman also served on the Board of Directors for the Plymouth Canton Community Literacy Council and a board member for the YMCA of Southeast Michigan. The next appointee was Dr. Mohamed Elmini. He's a fellow of the American College of Geriatrics and a diplomat of the American Board of Geriatric Specialists. He is also a fellow of the American Academy of Cardiology and a master of the American College of Ethical Physicians. Dr. Elmini is a graduate of the American University of Beirut Faculty of Medicine. The first alternate is Ms. Ebenei Geiten. She's a master's-level public health practitioner with the state of Michigan, where she has been working for the last four years to provide equitable community health programs to low-income Michigan residents. Ms. Geiten is part of the state's chronic disease division, My Race Team, that was developed to lead the division, to implement change strategies, to address the root cause of racism and how it impacts the health and future of Michigan residents. The final appointee was alternate number two, which is Stephen Thomas. Mr. Thomas has served many years in the customer service industry. He is a highly proficient accountant and has a wider range of computer knowledge. He's also an exceptional sexophonist that has put his skills on for many City of Westland events. So with that said, City Council, this will be the Westland, City of Westland's inaugural Diversity Equity and Inclusion Board. They will be working with the City Attorney's Office over the next couple of weeks for some training on Freedom of Information Act and also for Open Meetings Act. We plan that, at least at this point, that their first meeting will be in January. They'll work under the, the administrative liaison will be our HR Director, Ms. Stephanie Field, and she will be reaching out to the board to help them get off and get running. So ladies and gentlemen, your DEI Board. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. Administrative note: Item 4 under New Business has been called back by the petitioner, so we will not be discussing Item 4 today. Second administrative note: Item 10 will be moved between Items New Business, Item 2 and 3, it will be Item 2B now. So Item 4 has been removed from consideration from the council agenda for this evening. Item 10 will move between Items 2 and 3 for Item 2B. Now we'll move into comments and input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked will be answered during the agenda item following a motion and support from the council. Questions asked may be responded during the agenda item following a motion and support from the council. At this time, is there anybody on my right inside the chambers? Is there anybody on my left inside the chambers? Is there anyone outside in the overflow area? Yes, sir.
Richard Graham from Westland and also with Move Westland Forward. Regarding I and J on the consent calendar and the bond for pension obligations, just want to make sure everybody realizes that the City of Westland is taking out an approximate $80 million bond because of our very large over $100 million pension retirement and medical obligation. Merewild has increased the amount owed year after year and positioned Westland only behind cities like Detroit, Flint, Saginaw, and Grand Rapids with a higher amount owed. We had to supply a corrective action plan to the state of Michigan because of how bad it really is. Very, very few cities are in this type of unfunded pension, unfunded position. Now, the bond is a way to provide an avenue to lessen the overall payments, but it also sucks up most of the City of Westland for taking out additional bonds that could be used for a community and/or rec center that was taken away from the citizens. Very poor fiscal planning over the last 10-plus years. Regarding Item 6 for New Business, this is regarding the City of Westland having a new trash hauler. Merewild is selling the trash trucks that the taxpayer paid for $1.6 million. This is a, this amount, however, according to Steve Smith, we actually owe $2 million, and this was stated at the study session. Remember the $1 million increase by Merewild to save its depleted and frankly bankrupt sanitation fund? This is $1.7 million we are now paying additionally in our taxes. With this new contract, it is basically all wiped out. He spent almost all of it, but still has significant issues with recycling and the collection of proper items. Fiscal disaster of what Merewild has done within the sanitation department over the last 10-plus years. Buying truck, buying the trucks was a train wreck, and the only way out is spending more of your money. Thank you.
Are there any comments inside the chamber? Any other comments outside in the overflow? If you do, raise your hand high so I can see it. Okay, seeing none, I'll close. Citizen comments on the agenda, move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion by Councilman Londo.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Godbough. Is there a discussion? Do you have discussion?
No.
Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. I have a question on Item I under the consent calendar. Through the chair to Steve Smith, who is the city using to board up the homes? Is there any particular company that we are using to do the boardups?
Item L.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Item L. Thank you.
Through the chair, there's different companies that we use to do that, depending on availability at the time.
Through the chair to Steve Smith, can you email me a list of who the City of Westland has used to perform the boardups for the last five years?
Through the chair, sure.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council? Any other questions from the council? Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you. Just some comments on Item G really quick. That's the SEMCOG Planning Assistance Grant. It's for transportation and so forth. I just wanted to say that we need to do more than just have this on paper. I know in the past, we've, we've had OHM, we've had companies come up with plans and designs, and we haven't really acted on them. So I'd like to see by springtime, we, we get moving on pedestrian safety and other issues. We've already had a subcommittee on council that have met and talked about it. Right now, jaywalking is not illegal. You can actually jaywalk, but we want to encourage people to maybe use a light so that people can see you when you're driving down the street. You know, we've had issues with the, a really poor job by the state and county as far as the crosswalks, stripings, so, and ordinance cleanups we need to work on as well. I know a lot of us have discussed those, so with the passing of this, I just want to see us take the next step and do more here. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Any comments from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items: Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held in November 2, 2020; Approval of minutes of the study session held in November 2, 2020; Approval of requests from Don Nicholson Enterprises to organize and promote the Ninth Annual All-American Wayne Road Cruise Event on June 19, 2021; Approval of consulting agreement with Nasserini Strategy Group for grant writing and governmental relation services for the City of Westland. The contract period shall begin January 2, 2021, and will expire January 2, 2023, with the fee not to exceed $6,000 per month. Approval of the City of Westland's MERS Defined Benefit Plan Adoption Agreement Addendum; Adoption of Budget Amendments through September 30, 2020, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. This item had been introduced November 2, 2020; Approval of SEMCOG Planning Assistant Grant to Create the Bike Network Vision Plan. The city's share of this expenditure is $7,260. Adoption of Prepared Resolution Accepting the Rights for a Portion of Web Drive from the Michigan Land Bank. It authorizes the transfer paperwork to be signed by the mayor and city clerk and recorded with the Register of Deeds. Adoption of Prepared Resolution Authorizing Limited Tax General Obligation Pension Obligation Bonds, Series 2021, federally taxable. Approval to amend the MERS Defined Benefit Pension Retirement System Corrective Action Plan to include the MERS pension bonds as described in the city's Comprehensive Financial Plan approved on October 5, 2020. Adoption of Wayne County Hazard Mitigation Plan Resolution in order to be officially approved and eligible to apply for, receive, or directly benefit from hazard mitigation project grant funds under the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Programs. Approval of Transfer of Hazards and Boardup Fees to the Property Taxes for the Winter 2020 Tax Bill. Last item approved on the consent calendar: Approval of the Extension of the 2020 Winter Tax Payments until March 1, 2021. Moving to New Business, Item 1: Confirmation of Appointment of Caitlin Riley to the Economic Development Corporation and the Tax Increment Finance Authority, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, to fill an unexpired term with the term to expire September 18, 2021.
Is there a motion?
Some motion, support.
Motion by Councilman Godbough, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Mayor?
President, tonight's appointment of Ms. Caitlin Riley is to, she, she's a lifelong Westland resident. She's employed by Garden City Hospital as the Coordinator of Marketing and Business Development. Her predecessor served on the board representing Garden City Hospital, and Caitlin has now stepped in and taken her role, so Garden City Hospital has asked us to consider appointing her to, to board, to that, to that board. I have not seen her yet tonight. There she is in the back, so.
Well, we got to vote on it, so you'll get another applause hopefully here, so.
It's the old trick in the book.
Any discussion from the council? Any discussion from the council? Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. For the record, I would just like to point out that we are actually voting on this appointment and one other, which is a mayoral appointment. So the process that just occurred is extremely irregular with the previous commission, so I will be in support of this. But again, the, the process tonight with these different sets of rules and procedures is extremely irregular, and it's very disappointing. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Caitlin, please stand up so we can see her.
New Business, Item 2: Confirmation of Reappointment of Matthew Teransky to the Economic Development Corporation, Tax Increment Finance Authority, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, for a six-year term with the term to expire November 18, 2026.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman McDermott. Mayor?
Thank you, City Council. Mr. Teransky is not here tonight, actually. He's, he's kind of busy changing his business model. He's the owner of Olympic Coney Island. Council, you probably remember confirming him as an appointment to the EDC Board in July of 2020 to fill an unexpired term, so with, with this appointment, he will move into a new six-year term. Mr. Teransky's family has owned the Olympic Coney Island for the past 21 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New Business, Item 2B, formerly known as Item 10: Approval of Successor Collected Bartering Agreement between the City of Westland and the Westland Lieutenants and Sergeants Association. This agreement is effective January 1, 2020, through December 31, 2023.
I have a motion from Councilman Rakowski. Support from Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Councilman Rakowski, do you have discussion?
Yeah, thank you.
Is there any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New Business, Item 3: Approval of Proposed Resoning from R6 to CB1. Parcels 042020441, 042020442, 042020443, and the eastern portion of 04.
Parcels 042020441, 042020442, 042020443, and the eastern portion of 04990005, which is currently zoned R6. This is the east side of Wayne Road between Bach and Donnelly. Planning Department number 1952B. Planning Commission recommends approval, and if it's approved, further directs the city attorney to draft the necessary ordinance amendment.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Londo, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Rakowski. Is there any discussion, Councilman Londo? Discussion, Councilman Rakowski? Any other discussion from the council? Councilman Hursberg.
Thank you. I do have discussion. Can we get the update from Mo first?
Thank you so much. It's been a long day. Mo, please walk us through that.
Sure. Thank you, Council President. Good evening, City Council. The four parcels we are discussing today for the proposed rezoning are located on the west side of Arthur. We're here between Bach and Donnelly. This is just south of the southeast corner of Ford and Wayne. The petitioner here today is purchasing three of the four subject parcels from the Westland Downtown Development Authority. The parcels outlined in blue here, that's a separate matter from this rezoning case, and he, well, his client owns the fourth subject parcel here. These parcels are also part of the overall project, but not part of the rezoning case here today. They are also commonly owned by the petitioner. So the request here today to rezone these properties from their existing R6 zoning designation to CB1 is to pave the way for the construction of a building that will house a 4,800-square-foot medical office and a 4,200-square-foot unidentified retail use. There is a possibility that the retail component ends up being part of the medical office, depending on how much they expand. I'll have the petitioner give a little bit of background on what the medical use actually is, entails, and where they are moving from. I just also want to let you know that a preliminary site plan is attached in your packet, and if the rezoning is successful, the applicant will be in front of the Planning Commission and City Council to get the site plan approved, so you'll have another crack at the site plan at a later time. I think that's all I have for you tonight. Based off what I hear from the comments, I do have some additional notes that I can share regardless after, after the comments that are said. Thank you.
All right, is a petitioner here? What would you like to add to our discussion?
Good evening. I just wanted to have you understand what the proposed project is. The owners of the project are physicians, husband and wife physicians, and they plan to locate their practice there, at least one of them, my other practice. That, that was the goal. The site is larger, so it can support more than what the current need is, so there'll be additional space that potentially we leased out to additional medical office. The retail came into being, I don't think we'll have any, but in case there's more demand for retail than there is for, for additional medical space, then there'll be the opportunity to lease some of the space out. It's not a huge building, so I think it's probably going to all be medical, and when I say medical, it's basically a doctor's office. It is not a surgery, it's not anything like that. It is basically a doctor's office. The doctor is a rheumatism physician, so that's basically what the purpose of the building is.
Okay. All right. Do we have any questions or input from the council? Peter? Councilman Hursberg.
Thank you. Through the chair to Mo, I think you might have mentioned it. I was going to ask, are these parcels from the DDA being donated, or were they purchased?
They're being purchased.
You purchased them?
They're being purchased.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or input from the council? Any other questions from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
As was mentioned, new business item four has been removed at the request of the petitioner. New business, item five. Approval of proposed site plan and special land use to add a drive-through operation for Lefty Sub Shop to the existing building at 7060 North Wayne Road, east side of Wayne, between Warren and Hunter. This is Planning Department number 2244. Planning Commission recommends approval of the proposed site plan and the special land use.
Is there a motion?
No.
That a motion by Councilman Rakowski? Supported by Councilman Londo. Mo?
President, the subject property here is located just south of the southeast corner of Warren and Wayne. The property is approximately 1.15 acres and is currently zoned CB3. That's our general commercial business. The site contains an existing building owned by the petitioner and occupied by Men's Warehouse, GameStop, Massage Green, and a newly opened Lefty's Cheese Steak Restaurant. The petitioner tonight is requesting to construct a drive-through window on the north side of the building in this location here on your screen for the Lefty's Restaurant, primarily to help the new restaurant during the course of the pandemic. The restaurant will be open from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM seven days a week. And just some site plan notes here, the site will continue to utilize the single existing curb cut over here off of Wayne. The addition of the drive-through, drive-through operation to the existing restaurant is obviously expected to generate new traffic during the lunch and dinner time hours, but not a significant amount of traffic that will cause any negative impacts to either Wayne Road or the existing businesses here. Stacking and parking is sufficiently complied with the zoning regulations, and stacking will occur back here. There's also some parking back here for employees and customers as overflow from the primary live back here. Stacking will also occur back here. There's more than 10 spaces, or I'm sorry, eight spaces, which is required, and the order window will be approximately located in this location. Just some additional notes about the area. The restaurant is located in the city's shop and dine district, which is developed with a variety of commercial uses, including a variety of drive-through uses, and this parcel is designated community commercial, which is consist, which the use is consistent with. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this November 4, and is recommending approval to you. Thank you.
All right, is a petitioner here? Please, tell us all about it.
Hi, I'm Erica Mallard. I'm here with my father, Ali Mallard. We own both the building and Lefty's Cheese Steaks, which is a brand-new cheesesteak restaurant. We also actually own the other space right next to it, Massage Green, and I just wanted to note that this will significantly help us during the pandemic. It creates more contactless serving, and also that the other tenants in the building are okay with the drive-through being installed, so thank you.
I think you'll have some questions. Do we have any questions from the maker?
No, she has her time. I wanted to see how the other tenants felt.
All right. Comments from the supporter?
Yes. Thank you, first of all, for coming out tonight, and thank you for your investment. I've actually been in there, and it's, looks great in there, and subs are fantastic, so if you guys haven't been there, make sure to get in there and try it.
Thank you.
I'll be in support of this. I did watch the Planning Commission meeting, and there were some concerns with, pardon me, I was all under the weather last week. There were concern with the, where the drive-through is going to go with the only being 17 feet. I actually drove it, and when I drove through, another car passed by, and we had no problem getting by. I just want to make sure, since you guys do own the building, that if you do have any problems, that you'll consider extending the driveway, and then obviously continue to work with Tim Hortons next door to possibly get another driveway for us.
Yes, absolutely.
But again, thank you for your investment.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Councilman Hursberg?
Thank you. I watched the Planning Commission, too. There was a mention that you guys reached out to Tim Hortons about connecting their driveway. What was the outcome of that?
I'm, they, did you?
So, so actually, we haven't, we reached, we reached out, but not officially. We don't see a problem with working together to be able to make that happen.
Okay. Thanks. Through the chair to Mo, do we have any width requirements in, in city ordinance about drive-throughs, or do they meet that?
They do meet the width requirement, which is 12 feet. There's about seven, anywhere between 17 and 19 feet over there. Here, it's actually a little bit more than 18, so they comply with that. The Planning Commission imposed a condition that the only big issue they saw outside of here, well, I want to back up, actually. This is going to be a one-way, which it is right now, but they're flipping it, so it's a one-way going this way. So there's not any two-way traffic to impose the 12 and 12, which would be the 24. So they're compliant there, and the Planning Commission is requesting the removal of this parking space here for large delivery trucks, which they are adamant to do.
Thanks. And then just, I support the project. I think a drive-through is going to be a good update for the building and for the business. I just, a little bit concerned on the setup here, we haven't had a drive-through before. Mo, again, what guarantee do we have when we're coming in on the driveway on the top that there's going to, is there going to be a do not enter sign to go that way? Are they going to paint these arrows on, or are we just going to install a drive-through?
There is a signage plan directing traffic in the proper one-way circulation, yes. There is, I believe, I don't know if I.
I didn't see it in the packet, that's why I ask.
I will ensure that they place a do not enter sign somewhere in this location.
Okay. So best of luck to you guys.
We have no problem with that.
Okay. Y'all set, Councilman Hursberg? Next, we have Councilman McDermott.
Well, first off, thank you for your continued investment in our community. I know you guys have owned that building for, for quite a while, and putting Lefties in there, I think, is, is great. To echo Councilman Londo's sentiments, I had the chance to go there as well, and the subs are delicious, so I do hope that everybody frequents there. But through the chair to Mo, I know this was mentioned in your comments, but I know we have another location down the road at Ford in Wildwood with the Popeyes Chicken, where oftentimes there's overflow from the drive-through that goes, spills onto Ford Road, and that creates a hazard for, you know, cars coming right through the light there at Ford Road. We don't anticipate that being an issue here with the drive-through at this location?
So what of the positives for this site is it's so deep, and you can accommodate, I, I think it's the eight required stacking spaces starting in this location over here. So if, if they were to get that busy, I mean, we would be able to stack about 20 cars to the, to the curb cut over here, so there are no anticipated negative impacts as it relates to the drive-through operation addition that will spill over onto Wayne Road. I mean, you can, you can even see, so let's say the drive, or the ordering station is going to be located here, that puts the eight cars at about here. So to sub shop, little less traffic than, than your normal Wendy's, Burger King, or, or Popeyes. So I, I feel confident that they're sufficiently stacked, and they exceed the zoning ordinance requirements as well.
If I could just say, Popeyes, they are famous for their chicken sandwich, which takes longer to cook than steak, so maybe that will help.
All right, I got one. All right, I got a question. So first of all, I'm in support of it, cautiously optimistic. I have the same concerns all my colleagues did, and most of them trust, and Councilman Hursberg did a really good job, too, about the, the kind of the do not enter and putting the striping on the ground. That's going to be really important, not only to prevent congestion, but for all of us who've been going into that strip mall for various reasons over the years and not having to adhere by that. So behavior is going to dictate that maybe they're going to go up the left and go up the right, so it is tight. I am concerned about it, but I mean, if, if, if Mo is comfortable with it, and you guys are comfortable with it, I just want to make sure that, you know, you guys can take every precaution necessary to make sure we don't get jammed up, because not only do we want, not want vehicles to get into the middle of Wayne Road, which I don't think is going to be an issue, we kind of worry about vehicles being jammed up in the front parking area, so people are at Men's Warehouse or something, and they can't leave because there's cars in the driveway. So it is a concern. I would hope that your, your rotation time for the vehicles in the driveway is much shorter than that of the aforementioned Popeyes, so that you can meet with the productivity and production cycle to be able to get through.
Just to give you a little more comfort level, your concern is our intent. We want it to flow exactly the way you're talking, and it, it's not difficult for us to have that happen.
Okay.
Because we have enough room to be able to have the one-way signage, and based on, I mean, I've owned this center for years, and, and nobody goes that way anyways to go around. So achieving what we are hoping to achieve with Tim Horton is just a tremendous bonus, but without it, it's still going to be able to.
Well, I, I'm a loyal customer. I've been there twice already, so I'll be going through the drive-through with my watch.
Well, I mean, I would have, I, I would have brought you all sandwiches, but I didn't really want to tilt your decision.
We do have another question from Councilman Londo.
Just briefly, if approved tonight, how quick do you guys think you'll be operational with the drive-through service?
I'm hoping before Christmas.
Great, thank you. All right, are there any other questions from the council? Any other questions from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
We're very grateful.
New business, item six. Approval of bid for municipal refuse collection services. Administration recommends the low bidder priority waste in a total amount of $38,449,174.
Is there a motion?
No.
Motion by Councilman Godbout, is there support? Support by Councilman Rakowski. Mayor?
Thank you, City Council. As I, as I go into this, we did have a study session on this a week or so ago, and I appreciate City Council taking a good, hard look at this. It's not something that, that we take lightly, and I was just sitting here thinking that the Ruthenberg family has been moving trash in our town before our town was a town, so, so it's not something that we take lightly, and we do feel comfortable with the arrangement that we're going to be recommending tonight. So City Council, just, I'm going to go through this real quick, because the, our study session was not televised, so this will give us a chance to talk with the people at home a little bit and the people in the audience. If we go back to the budget process back in, you know, part of the proposed budget, as we started to go through that, when we got to sanitation, one of the things that we were looking at was being in a position of, of having an aging fleet, looking at having to spend some capital dollars to, to update that fleet. By talking with council, listening to council's comments, there was a, definitely, the direction was that we wanted to get out of owning and maintaining our own fleet. For, for some folks that, that weren't, weren't in the room back when we decided to get in our, the truck fleet, I'd just say that at the time, I know council, I mean, Godbout was, was on the council at this time, is the city council was looking at a, a new trash contract with a sanitation millage that, that wasn't adequate to, to cover the cost of, of what trash was at the time. There were some comments earlier about, about the sanitation millage. The original sanitation millage in our town has been there for 50-plus years, or about 50 years. The consensus at the time of the city council with the administration was that we did not want to go out to the public and ask for another millage at that time, so that's when we started looking at what would our costs be if we were to buy our own fleet and maintain our fleet and buy our own gas, and, and all the different ways that we could save money as opposed to passing those costs onto a contractor, then to have them come back to us. So it wasn't something that, that was taken lightly, and the city council at the time deliberated it quite a bit, but the decision was unanimous at the time that, that we would purchase our own trucks. So with that said, we, we fast forward, and we have a fleet now. We have six 2015s, and we have three 2019s. So coming out of the budget session, what we did was, because we currently have four years left on our, our contract with, with Midwest Sanitation, and under that, under that contract, we didn't have the, there wasn't an avenue within that contract to tell our contractor to, to go out and buy a fleet of trucks to service the city. So what we did then was, we, we put it out for a competitive seal bid. The city issued an RFP, which is a Request for Proposals for Municipal Refuse Collection Services. The RFP specifications called for a 10-year agreement, and this was open to the entire industry for review and consideration. Before the RFP was made public, the draft specifications were sent to all the city council members for comments back on August 21st. We waited, and after no comments were received, then the RFP specifications were finalized, and then posted on Mitten and the city's website. The RFP was open to the industry for bidding for a 30-day period. The bidding closed on September 24th at 3:00 PM, and the responses were publicly opened and read aloud. Per standard procedures, copies of the responses received by each vendor were also made available to the city council. As part of that RFP process, we asked those that, that chose to bid on, on the service to also take a look at the city's fleet and to make us an offer for the fleet. The city's fleet, like I said, was six 2015 MACs. city's fleet, like I said, was six 2015 MACs. They're the, the sidearm trucks, the auto-load sidearms, and we had three, one 2019 MAC automatic load sidearm, and then two 2019 Freightliner rear loads. The purchase price of these trucks were, the original ones were $252,000. The, the 2019 MAC was $286,000, and the two 2019 Freightliners were $183,000 apiece. So, the purchase price of our fleet was $2.4 million. Of course, we've depreciated on our annual audit. The, the current book value is about $1 million, just over $1 million in council. I know that you saw that, that spreadsheet from the city council. So, back to the RFP, we did have three members of the industry respond to it. Those bidders were Republic, GFL, and Priority. Vince from Priority is in the audience here tonight. They're the, the company that we're recommending. Earlier, during the budget process, council, you probably remember, we sat down with a representation from Priority, I believe it was the CEO at the time, Todd Stamper, and they expressed that they were in talks with Midwest Sanitation at the time, and that's kind of was at the beginning of this process. Their company has, in the meantime, entered into an equity contract with, with an equity firm that's backed by the Penske folks. So, at that time, they pursued the equity as opposed to merging, as we had heard with Midwest. But when the, the RFPs went out, and after the RFPs came back in, Priority and Midwest did resume conversations, and it looks like if we make the decision to move to Priority tonight, that, that Midwest, Paul will still have a, a position with them overseeing the Westland account. He'll be our representative, and his employees will have a chance to, to move over to Priority, and obviously, they're experienced. They know the city well. Paul is, is probably the best PR guy that we've had as far as customer service on trash. So, this really made a lot of sense for the city. It checked a lot of boxes when we, when we asked Priority to, we asked the industry to, to give us a, a number on our fleet. Priority was the high, the high bidder on that. They bid $1.6 million for the fleet. So, one of the things that we achieved is obviously, part of, part of the contract that you have tonight, they're going to purchase our fleet, and they're also going to deliver a new fleet here in a short period of time, and it's spelled out in the, in the contract, and I'll let Vince talk about exactly when that's gonna happen. But that'll get us out of the truck business. It gets us out of the maintenance. We're out of the fuel and all the ancillary costs that go along with, with owning and, and being responsible for trucks. It will also eliminate the $1.6 million, the debt that the city's been carrying on the books from the capital improvement fund to the sanitation fund. So, this payment from Priority will be put back into the capital improvement fund, which will square up that debt. With the 10-year contract, it, it makes sense for the city. It's a little bit longer than we do some contracts, but trash is something that, that's not going away. With the 10-year contract, it gave Priority the chance to, to recoup some of the cost for the trucks that they're gonna be purchasing, offset the cost of the trucks that they're gonna be providing, and then spreading that out over, over a 10-year period. The, the rate of increase over the 10 years is less than 2% a year. I believe it averaged out to 1.95%. So, this is really gonna give us a chance to lock in the, the sanitation hauling part of our sanitation expenses for the next 10 years, and it's something that, that we're looking forward to. Obviously, with Paul being involved and with his experienced fleet, we expect an easy transition. There was the talk about, there has been some prepayments to Midwest to help with the, the cash flow of, of their business. Vincent, it's part of the, the thing, I'm gonna have Steve Smith talk on just a minute, is the prepayments to Midwest are actually gonna be, we're gonna be made whole on those from Priority. They've asked to add that to the cost of the trucks. I'm assuming that there's, there's some tax advantages to them for doing it that way. But Steve's gonna talk about how we'll receive the payment for the trucks and the prepayments that we made to Midwest to make us whole. The goal would, would have a January 1st start date. Vince has told us that there will be no route changes, and that there will be no changes to bulk pickup, compost, or recycling. So, we think that we've got a, we've spent a lot of time on this, and I think that it makes sense, and I feel comfortable recommending it to the city council. Before we kick it back to you, I wanted just to have Steve Smith weigh in on exactly how we're proposing, or Priority's proposing to, to pay us for the trucks and reimburse us for those prepayments to Midwest.
Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Through the chair, council, I had sent an email late Friday afternoon indicating there was a change in the amount that we're gonna receive for the trucks. And basically, on page 11 in the contract, it goes over the payments. There'll be three payments made to the city. One will be in December, which is next month. One will be by the end of March, and the last one will be at the end of June, which will be within our fiscal year. So, the city will receive not only the truck payments, but money back for the advances that were made in total by the end of our fiscal year. So, if you had any questions on that, you know, that's why I had kinda given it to you ahead of time, so you know.
Thank you. Vince, Priority, do you have anything else you'd like to add? Mayor, were you not done?
Just, just the last thing. I just wanted to thank both Vince and Attorney's Office, Jim Fosson. They've worked together since that study session to put together a contract. I think that they did a good job of protecting the city's interest as far as a performance bond. We have that in place. You see a $2 million performance bond that, that the city could execute if Priority was to fail in any way. And also, I think that we've got the protections there, that they're gonna put in a new fleet, and they're gonna maintain a modern fleet throughout the, the 10 years at their expense. So, and we've also protected ourselves if the city was to change landfills over the next 10 years. And while it may have seemed impossible a while ago, that there are some changes in the, in the landfilling market. So, we currently contract with CWCSA for waste management, but that could potentially change in a few years. So, with that, that's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Vince, you have any?
I just wanted to add, thank you for letting me speak here tonight. All right, I wanna say on behalf of Priority that if this council approves this contract, we look forward to becoming more of a, more of a part of this community. As I stated in the study session, it is our plan to base our Westland trucks here in Westland, once we find a suitable location. I will also state that, that this contract represents a substantial investment by Priority in this community. I can tell you that between the purchase of these trucks, the purchase of the new trucks, as well as the bond cost itself, that represents alone a $3.5 million investment that we'll be immediately putting into the city to service this contract. So, with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
All right. We'll move. Any comments from the maker? Godbout?
No, not at this point.
Okay. Any comments from the support?
I'd just like to say that I know there was apprehension of a 10-year contract, but for me, that's fiscally responsible. It allows us to project for a long term, and it's nice to, we keep using the term, so I'll use a get out of the truck business. That'll be a relief with the additional cost of fueling and maintaining those vehicles as well. So, I'm in support, and thank you, Vince, and I don't know your counterpart's name, for being present tonight and sharing with us your vision for waste pickup in Westland.
Councilwoman Green?
Thank you. I'd like to start by thanking Paul for the service that you've provided for the city of Westland. I know your father had the contract years ago, and now you have it, and now it's going to transition over to Priority. I think you do a great job, and so thank you for your service to the city. To speak to one of the references that Councilwoman Rukowski just made in terms of a concern with fiscal mismanagement, the contract that the city of Westland is just now getting out of, for the sake of transparency to those who are here tonight and those who will be watching at home, the contract that the city of Westland, under the leadership of Mayor Wilde, they entered into a contract with Paul's company that required the taxpayer to buy the entire fleet of garbage trucks. There's no other city in this area that entered into a contract to buy the trucks for the trash hauler. So, that is similar to your city buying trash trucks for a waste management contract, or a Rizzo, or whomever. Cities typically do not invest in what is considered overhead to run a business. The city bought all the trucks that the Midwest used to pull our trash. The city or taxpayers paid for all of the gas in those trucks. So, those were our tax dollars at work, which I believe was immediately responsible for the need for the millage that just occurred in the city of Westland in 2020. Our tax dollars, or taxpayers, are now paying more money towards sanitation because of this contract, which, again, we purchased the trucks, taxpayers paid for all the gas, taxpayers paid for most of the repairs on those trucks, taxpayers paid to put insurance on those trucks so that the trucks could be on the road, and then taxpayers also paid for the trash company to come in and pull all of our trash. The type of contract that Westland had was absolutely unheard of. You will never see that in, in a city that, you just never see it. I, I'm frankly shocked by some of the things that I have seen in the city of Westland. So, now we are at the point that Paul's company is going to either sell or merge with Priority, which at this point, I think is a great idea because of the type of contract that the previous city council allowed the mayor to enter into on behalf of the taxpayers. So, this contract is $38 million contract for 10 years. The mayor was correct when he stated that city council was made aware that the contract went out to bid. What he did not state was that there was no input requested from city council, and at the study session, I expressly stated that it makes absolutely no sense to lock, from a fiscal standpoint, to lock taxpayers into a contract in the year 2020 that we are on the hook for until 2030. 10 years from now, you all will be paying for that trash contract when many of us may not even be in elected office. Also, I asked the mayor and the city to insert a contract due to their insistence to issue a 10-year locked contract, which means that if the city should experience any type of financial hardship, or we need to send this, or we'd like to send this contract out to bid to ensure that it is financially feasible for the amount that we can afford, five, eight, seven years from now, we are unable to do that because of the terms of this agreement. And so, I asked the city to insert a clause which would allow us to cancel that contract, this 10-year contract, should our finances change, or if the city should need to do so at a later date. The contract that the city put forward, that is being, we're being asked to approve tonight, does not include any such clause under termination. The only ability that the city has included for cancel late, or termination is only if the contractor, which would be Priority, fails to maintain the bond or keep up the routes, if the contractor should file bankruptcy, or if the contractor fails to meet their financial obligation. Anything outside of that, we are on the hook. So, we do not reserve the right with this contract to even send it out to bid three years from now if, if, if we want to, which is standard procedure to ensure that you are getting the best, the most financially feasible service for your, in this instance, it would be citizens. And with that, I will say that these contracts, not mu, it's, it's no different than what's occurring tonight. The contracts that come before city council do not protect citizens, do not, does not protect taxpayers. It does not include an out clause. Many of these contractors, and Paul is no exception, donate heavily to the political campaign accounts. For all these people you see sitting up here, 95% of them get money from these contractors politically to run for office, every office. Every time the mayor has run for office, all of, with the exception of three city council people, the elected officials get money from these contractors when they're running for office. So, when you are, when, when they are being asked to include just a clause on a 10-year contract that will protect taxpayers, it begs to question, why would you not do that? And so, again, this is not personal. For me, this is business, and this makes absolutely no sense that we would enter into this contract when the city of Westland, like most cities, just took a huge financial hit just for COVID-19 that nobody could predict. It just happened. Now, if we have something else, God forbid, and we go into a financial tornado or what have you, we've locked ourselves into a $38 million contract for the next 10 years with no ability to, to even renegotiate unless the contractor fails to keep up their end of the bargain. And so, for that reason, I am not in support of the contract the way that it is written. I am not opposed to voting in support of the contract, but not unless there is a clause inserted that would give the city of Westland the option to terminate this contract with a 30-days written notice for any reason that the city would deem necessary. And so, with that, I will make a motion that the current contract that has been put forward, the 10-year, $38 million contract for Priority, be amended to include an additional clause under termination that would state that the city of Westland reserves the right to terminate said contract with a written notice of 60 days.
Does that complete your motion?
It does. Thank you.
Is there any support?
Support.
Support. It was supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there a discussion? Councilman Godbout?
No, no discussion. I was just anticipating.
Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Rukowski, do you have your light on? Everybody's turning their lights on here. Councilman Godbout?
Yeah, just in, in regards to, and this is on the motion-
Point of order, Council President, do we have to vote on the mo, can he, we have to vote first before he can comment?
You just made a sub-motion, and now there's discussion for it.
No, I made, I put a motion on the floor.
Councilman Hersberg supported it, and now there's discussion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
There is termination wording in the existing contract. It's not unlike most termination contracts. To have a contract where you can just terminate for no reason with a 60-day notice does not adequately protect the, the company, nor would it protect the city if they decided to get out of the contract with a 60-day written notice, which would put us in a, in a completely different scenario of trying to find somebody to, to take over the collection of everybody's refuse. So, the, the termination contract, or language that's in here, and it's in two different places, actually, in this document, in my opinion, is, is completely adequate to protect the city, as well as the fact that there is also a performance bond that the company is putting up to guarantee their performance and ability to perform the contract as it's written. So, I'm in, I'm against the additional wording of any other termination clauses in the contract.
Is there any other discussion on the sub-motion? Councilman McDermott, you had your light on, or you're not wishing to speak anymore?
No, thank you. That's what Godbout actually-
That's the point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the amended motion? Any other discussion on the amended motion?
I see the motion.
What's it? The motion, Mr. Clerk?
You're testing my listening skills. What I have is this, and I would ask that the maker and the seconder weigh in if it's inaccurate, that the current contract be amended to include a clause that states the city of Westland reserves the right to terminate the contract with a 60-day written notice.
For any reason.
Thank you. For any reason.
Councilwoman Rakowski, are you satisfied with that restatement?
Thank you.
Roll call.
Excuse me, my light is on. You call for counsel.
It is not on. I'm looking right here.
It's on. I'm actually looking at it.
I will turn it on. It's actually on.
Thank you. So my follow-up comment in terms of what Councilman Godbell stated, because I do not want our community to be misinformed, and I realize that the reason why you are not in support of it. But again, these contractors are donating to political campaigns, and it makes no sense, in my opinion, to lock taxpayers into a contract that they are on the hook for until 2030. Councilman Godbell stated that it does not protect the city to insert a clause that would allow us to cancel within 60 days. Not only does it protect taxpayers, it gives us the option to renegotiate. No one with a strong business sense would walk in and cancel a contract without doing their due diligence. If you, if a sharp financial expert, which we have some in the city of Westland, or anyone who is running this city, became aware, whether it is from our auditors or whomever, that we are looking at a problematic projection, which we've been told multiple times in the city of Westland, then you organize, you send it out to bid, you see how it comes back, and you compare it to what you're getting, what you have on the table. If it is not feasible, then you make a decision at that point. This allows us the option to proceed with caution in the event that it becomes necessary. And there was also a misstatement. There is nothing in this contract that gives us the option to terminate unless, as I stated before, the contractor fails to perform. So with the comment of Councilman Godbell, you actually confirmed what I stated. I stated that unless the contractor fails to perform his duties the way this contract is written, in addition to keeping a bond and not filing bankruptcy, with the exception of that which is related to his performance, these taxpayers have no protection. So there may never be a need for us to exercise the out clause. The purpose of the out clause is simply inserted in the event between 2020 and 2030, Westland takes a financial shift for the negative that taxpayers are protected before we have to go into, or God forbid, we end up having to present another millage to our taxpayers due to the decisions that we are making in 2020. And so for that reason, I just wanted to clarify that misinformation. Thank you.
I have the mayor real quick. Mayor?
Yeah, just, while we're in the discussion phase of this motion, is just a couple of things. Is first of all, we keep hearing these comments that these contractors are donating money to campaigns. There are very strict campaign finance laws, and unless you're saying that somebody is doing something to violate campaign finance law, then if you're saying that, then just say it. If you're not, then I think alluding to it is slanderous and the people that sit up here and the people that sit out there and the people that donate to your campaign too, they don't deserve to have slanderous things like that said publicly. But here's the other thing is that, as the gentleman from Priority said, is that their initial investment into this project in Westland is about $3.5 million. They're going to purchase our fleet, and then they're also going to purchase another fleet and deliver it here. So there was quite a bit of time that was spent on the termination clause back and forth. They probably spent more time on that than anything else. And for the city to reserve the right to cancel on 60-days notice for any reason that we think that we want to bid it out again or something, I think would have, it would have been very difficult for us to not only get the 1.6 million for our trucks, the prepayments to Midwest, and delivery of a new fleet, and an agreement that they're going to maintain that fleet with a modern, you know, for the 10 years. As business people, and I've said on the other side of buying equipment before, is that you have to buy just the amount of money that they're buying for new trucks, you have to be able to have a contract that's going to back that up so that you can recoup that money. So we feel very comfortable with the contract. We feel very comfortable with the termination contract. We feel comfortable with the performance bond. And at the end of the day, we just bid this out to the industry, and they all, whatever industry we have around here, they all bid on us. So we just got to see their numbers for the next 10 years. So I don't foresee that two or three years from now that we're going to be able to throw this back out to bid and get a better price than we got today. And as far as if finances change for the city, we do have a dedicated millage that I know that is part of the budget or is part of the study session. Dan Block gave us a spreadsheet that forecast out the millages. And so we do feel comfortable that even if there is a downturn in the economy, anything that's COVID-related or anything else is that we do have the financial mechanism to deliver this contract because it doesn't matter who's sitting up here, somebody's going to have trash that we're going to have to pick up over the next 10 years. So once again, we feel very, very comfortable with what we presented here tonight. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
So as we know, they are the low bidder. So I believe we'd be hard pressed to find somebody to come in any lower when we have a shorter-term contract. Many times, the savings is amateurized over the length of the contract. As far as their ability to haul trash or to serve our community, I've had the opportunity to speak to some of the other communities that they serve, and they had nothing but good things to say about them. You know, these two- and three-year contracts that we've had in the past, they always come up with a nearly exponential increase in services the next time we go out to bid or get a new contract. 10 years does feel like a long time, but 10 years is not very long when you are planning your finances in the future for the city.
Councilman Godbell.
Thanks. Just in, again, in reference to the termination contract, it was alluded that there were only three things in here that would cause a termination to take effect. But in fact, if you look at it, it says, and it was mentioned about the maintaining the insurance and bond requirements, but it also says, attempt of assignment or subcontracting, failure to maintain schedule and routes, receipt of excessive complaints about service. So there are numerous provisions within the termination contract that, section here, that the city attorney, I'm sure, had put in here to protect the city in event that there is a lack of performance, aside from the fact that that performance is also covered by an additional bond. So I'm very comfortable with the city's ability to adequately protect itself over the 10-year life of this contract. Thanks.
Councilman Green.
Yes, thank you. To speak to what Councilman Godbell just stated, there's only three clauses under termination, and I've already stated what it says. It is not. And I understand there are supporters of whomever in the audience, but my job is to stand up for 85,000 residents, and that's what I'm going to do to the best of my ability. The clause A, it specifically states that if they fail to maintain the bond, which is what I stated, B states if they file bankruptcy either voluntarily or involuntarily, and C is if they do not keep up their financial obligations. And there are small wordings in each particular contract, but the sum of it is if they fail to keep up their end of the bargain, then the city is locked in for 10 years. This is not a question of whether this company can perform their duties. Obviously, they do a good job. So if people will pull their emotions away, this has nothing to do with whether or not the quality of their service, their reputation. We've all done the research in that regard. And again, there may never be a reason to terminate prior to 10 years, but to lock us into an agreement when we couldn't get beyond 2020 without taking a hit. And this happens regularly. City council regularly gets amendment requests for budgetary, to clear budget requests because it wasn't in the budget, oh, an emergency happened. We cannot project what this city will look like 10 years from now. So what is the harm in putting a clause in to give us that right to be able to exercise a option to either send it out to bid and compare it with what we're currently paying, go back to the contractor and say, you know what, the city can no longer afford that. Can you, is there any way that you can work with us on the price? Or to have to go in a different direction. There is absolutely nothing wrong with that option as an option that may never be necessary. And it does beg the question, why? And in terms of what the mayor stated about mentioning that contractors are donating to elected officials, that's not slanderous. Anybody can go to Wayne County Campaign Finance and pull up all of our campaign reports. That is public information. And so what begs to question is the contracts, this is not the only contractor who gets these type of, these are not the only contractors who donate to elected officials. That city council refuses to insert a clause to allow us to take a look at where we are before we lock ourselves into five- and 10-year contracts. This happens all the time with these contractors, and they won't put a clause in to protect the city if something should change. So when the mayor speaks about slander, again, it's one of those key words that politicians use to pull on your heartstrings. There are no attacks with talking about public information. These contractors are donating to the campaigns of elected officials, and they are getting long-term contracts that we refuse to put a clause in in the event that we can no longer afford this. And 10 years is far too long to lock us in, and that is my position. And I do so on behalf of the city, of the residents of the city of Westland. So thank you.
Councilwoman McDermott?
Through the chair to the finance director. So this would be directly paid for out of the sanitation fund, correct?
Through the chair, yes. Those are dedicated funds, yes.
And so that's a dedicated fund that's set with the current millage that we have that we passed back in March, that the taxpayers passed back in March?
That is correct, yes.
So if we were locked in to a 10-year agreement, the dedicated sanitation fund would continue to pay throughout the 10-year contract with Priority?
That is correct, yes.
And then my final question here, when you look at the historical averages for waste and refuse contracts, historically speaking, and I do apologize for putting you on the spot like this, and you may not have the numbers, but when we look at historical averages for waste and refuse contracts, historically, have commodity prices and ultimately contractual prices gone up or down over historical, let's say, a 10-year average?
Traditionally, they go up. The CPI was just around between 2% and 3% per year.
Thank you. Nothing further.
Point of order, Council President. Is discussion on the amendment. So if we can call the question at this time?
Correct. Is that a motion to call the question?
Yes.
Is there support?
Support.
All right. Call the question. Roll call.
Who supported that?
Councilwoman Rakowski, right? Did you, oh, Councilman Godbell, I apologize.
Thank you.
Remember, this is-
Regarding the amendment to item six, it reads as follows, proposed amendment, current contract would be amended-
This is for call the question first.
Thank you. To call the question, Councilman Godbell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hurd.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Onto the question, amendment, proposed amendment to item six, which reads, current contract amended to include a clause that states the city of Westland reserves the right to terminate the contract with a 60-day written notice for any reason. Councilman Godbell.
No.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
No.
Councilman McDermott.
No.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
No.
President Hurd.
No.
Motion fails. We're back to the item itself.
Moving back to original motion. Is there any other discussion from the council? Roll call.
This is for approval of the item.
There's approval of the item.
Councilman Godbell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
No.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
President Hurd.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll now move to new business, item seven. This is consideration of approval of the 2021 Appointed Officials and Mayor's Office Pay Plan.
Is there a motion?
I'm sorry, and the period is January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Londo. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Rakowski. Stephanie, you have it?
Good evening, council. This is our approval of the 2021 Appointed Officials and Mayor's Pay Plan, January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021, I should say. And this, there's no changes to the plan. As is, the only change would be what was presented during the budget session for the facilities director position to be added to grade two, and the parts and rec director position to be added to grade four of the Exhibit A of the pay plan. The CPI, the medical CPI was just changed in accordance to the plan as well.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item eight, approval of 2021 City Clerk's Benefit Package for the period January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski.
Support.
Support by Councilman Godbell?
Yes.
Very good. Mr. Clerk, do you have anything you'd like to add?
The only thing I would add is this represents no change aside from the CPI-required monetary changes that were referenced by the HR Director a moment ago, is applying to the Mayor's Plan, and that there was also a request from HR that we add language involving current city retirees. Aside from that, there are no changes.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. New business, item nine, approval of 2021 Deputy City Clerk's Benefit Package for the period January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Mr. Clerk, do you have anything to add to that?
The same modifications as mentioned during the previous two plans also apply to this. No other changes.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. New business, item 11, approval of voucher.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Godbell. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We now move into comments from the public. Everyone speaking for the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly, or, excuse me, orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my right? Ms. McKinnon?
I think most of the people in the city understand what a budget is. I want to talk about is handicap parking with the, when are coming on, people have to understand you cannot park in handicap parking unless you have a plate or a sticker. And there is a big fine for it now. With winter coming, it's dangerous for people with disabilities. Don't think because it's empty that nobody's going to use it unless you have a sticker or a plate. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my left? Sir?
Thank you, President Hart. Mayor Wild, council. I've come here a couple of times. I just wanted to reiterate that the current scoring for the marijuana businesses is only differentiating any applicants based on location and a random selection. There's been quite a lot of talk this evening on different businesses, whether it's traffic flow, economic incentive, in the case of marijuana businesses, there's the consideration of security. Time to open was mentioned. None of these things are in any way differentiated on the existing scoring. These location-based scoring metrics have already been, I guess, challenged in other municipalities, specifically in Traverse City, there's a very similar scoring metric that prioritizes location over anything else. And I just ask that the council take these as recommendations from the mayor's office and review every single application, not just for the scorecard or the number on the scorecard, whether it's due to a random selection or because of the address on the piece of paper, and actually spend the time to read the application, see what the applicants are offering to the city, and what those best business practices are. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone out in the lobby? Sir?
Hello, everybody. There's a few things. My biggest thing was Ms. Campbell's not here today. So I'm not sure if you guys are aware, the COVID grant, some of it, I'm sure, you know, some of it was supposed to go towards rent and mortgages to help people out. I know this from experience because I have many tenants in the Norwayan district especially who reached out to Ms. Campbell, have called Ms. Campbell, applied for this rental help. And just today, my first tenant was able to get back, or told me about it. This was four and a half months after she applied, four and a half months, and they are still wanting information. By four and a half months, that's going to be, you know, the people are going to be homeless at that point. They're going to be evicted, or whatever the circumstance might be. Unfortunately, she's not here today. I would like someone to look at, this has to be speedier. If you're going to be homeless, or mortgages, or whatever it is, you can't have four and a half months plus. Second thing, I've submitted many FOIAs, going as far back as last November, December last year, that the FOIA coordinator has not given. One of the most recent FOIAs was regarding the COVID grant. I asked to see where all the money had been going and to what entities. It showed me where the money had been given, but it didn't show me where, it didn't show me the entities, just said six individuals, or whatever it was. Now, another thing, you guys aren't aware, since no one is being able to take advantage of this rent or mortgage assistance, on the FOIA I received, I think it's two weeks ago, Westland has about $180,000 to $190,000. $180,000 to $190,000, there's tons of money out there. But Westland is making it difficult for these people to get this assistance, very, as I said, four and a half months, and it's still, the process still isn't done. Yeah, very. So I don't want this money to be applied back to a general fund. I don't want it to go to the legacy program as they like to do at the Vitality Center with the Norwayan City Council or whatever it is. But, I mean, I know the CDC said they're moratorium, but evictions are still happening. There's eight, eight, nine, or 10 things they have to do to not get evicted. And that's every adult in the household. I know this because I'm a landlord, I've been in the courts. Like I said, there's a lot I want to talk about, but that's the biggest thing. Because it's just, it's so much money, and Joanne Campbell and her sister are making it so hard for people, contacting them four and a half months after receiving the application. I'd like this changed, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
All right, going back inside, anyone on my right, your left, Ray?
Interesting evening here, anyway. Ray, go Ray is up here, and been keeping updates on my phone with the governor's office, and here we go again. Some of the places are being, I feel sorry for the businesses, the restaurants, movie theaters, bowling alleys, as I get done reading about some other places are still going to be open, which is good. I am concerned with the surge. I have a mask, I wear it. Hopefully, everybody else needs to work together and knock this thing out. I'm concerned. But I do want to say thank you to the frontiers, though. Police officers are always out there trying to save lives, their mental health and everything. They're really dealing with it out there. Fire department, you guys are doing a good job, too. And I also want to thank the hospitals and what they're doing. You know what, we should all appreciate that sometimes and say thank you to them. Because one day, I saw a police officer, he had some things on his mind, and I said, hey, officer, how are you doing today? You just don't know sometimes, you can really make a difference with people. Because you don't know what me or anybody else in this room, what we're going through. And we need to be more passionate during this epidemic time. So, anyway, I want to say happy Thanksgiving and check on your loved ones. This is very important. And mental health to me, as people keep telling me all the time, Ray, keep going out there and talking about it, stress it, it's important. Because mental health can, it can get me down, too. It affects us all. If I sit here and watch the news all day long, it's depressing. I try to keep things positive, and I keep going out there. And I am mobilizing my car if I have to. And I care what goes on around here. And I want to say thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on my left? Okay, anyone else out in the lobby?
Hey, Council, I wanted to come over here, guys, to discuss, now, I really did help other people do the voting training, the voting turned out, so just a little update. I was appointed to the Nick Fears Michigan, so the Nick Fears is the, it's going to take time to remember it, but it's the chapter of Michigan that deals with directly with Tito Alcoa syndrome. And the second thing is, during the election, me and my other advocates, we are working on international advocacy. For the past couple months, I have been talking to advocates in Canada, and like, they've been dialoguing, like, I talk about their elected officials, they see the things that I post about my local elected officials, and I do the bond. And so the biggest accomplishment was my dad is from Jamaica, so my dad is an immigrant. So just recently, I had sent an email to the Jamaican Integrative Care Network, the Jamaican Mental Health Network, and they replied, totally interested. So I just wanted to reach out, and I guess this is me, I do remember where he, we actually come a long way. I had a piece of paper from the running bit that I had brought out to the original legislation day. So I just want you guys to say, doing good, you know, I'm putting my passions to work at other things, I understand that you guys have committees, and guys, you know how you do it, but like, I'm going to go get her, so I'm always reaching out to other companies and things like that. So hopefully, I come to you to get the passports. I'm joking, I'm joking. Okay, to you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else inside the audience here? Okay, anybody else outside in the lobby?
Hello, council. Mayor, I wanted to thank you for the appointment on the DEI Commission, and also Councilwoman Green, I would like to work with you if you have any ideas, I'd be open to, because I know this is a very passionate cause for you, and you're very, put together the, forgot what it's called, systemic racism, yes, the declaration. And so I appreciate that. Okay, so thank you, everybody, I appreciate your support. Secondly, I'd like to say that I do think that Councilwoman Green does represent a lot of taxpayers when she talks about the clause, the termination clause for a waste contract. I haven't studied the contract, I'm not in contract law, but I do want to say what my concern is as a taxpayer, is the part about recycling. Because if we find that we are not doing a good job, I don't know if that's part of the overall, it's not part of the contract, okay, well, then I don't have anything else to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do it again, anybody else inside? Anybody out in the lobby? Yes, sir.
Richard Graham from Westland, and also with Move Westland Forward. The ultimate measure of a person is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy. Today is a day of controversy and injustice in regards to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission, or the DEI. It is frankly appalling to see Arthur Warren placed on this commission while snubbing a councilwoman for being part of this. Remember, there is always a way to have a councilperson be part of a commission, and as an example of the city of Westland for this commission. We see this on other boards where the HR Director is a liaison. Again, this is just one example, but there is a way. There is no question that this councilperson, Tasha Green, should have been part of the commission in some way, form, or fashion. Frankly, she forced the city to form this commission. Racism charged in the city of Westland election. Westland Democratic Club President Arthur Warren is quoted as saying in the Westland Eagle newspaper that State Representative Coleman is supported by a racist agenda and has displayed racist tactics. He goes on to say that Councilman Hersberg, Peter Hersberg, has issues with the police, and these were indicative of his character. He also decided to go after taxpayers, my wife and I, and stated we are on the edge of neo-Nazism and the Ku Klux Klan. He repeatedly made comments directed to Councilwoman Tasha Green, and many see this as very, as deplorable and not very compassionate. Arthur Warren then states on State Representative Coleman's Facebook page that he paid for the publishing in the Eagle and did not want people to ever forget. I will repeat that. Arthur Warren then states on State Representative Coleman's Facebook page that he paid for the publishing in the Eagle and did not want people to ever forget. This is what Mayor Wild, along with Team Wild, believes should be on the commission. I will enjoy going to this DEI Commission meetings. More pure Wild and Team Wild, shameful in their actions and decisions. They will only further defide a fractured community. The time is always right to do what is right. I stated a couple quotes over the last few minutes, and would like to recognize the late Dr. Martin Luther King with such powerful words. Through the chair to the council, to Councilwoman Green. If you'd like to comment, please go ahead. Have a good evening and thank you.
Hold on, let me stop, we have 27 seconds left. Let's see here.
Thank you, Mr. Graham, and I share your concern regarding the comments that have been made by Arthur Warren as well, and many of the actions that Westland residents are aware of that have been extremely alarming in our city. It's my understanding that the mayor was contacted by organizations that work with the city towards diversity, and they expressed concern and asked the mayor to remove Arthur Warren from the commission, which the mayor refused to do.
Thank you.
But I am-
That's time.
No, he went through the chair. I would, read the, read the policy.
I'd like to go ahead and read what's right here.
No, read the policy. The policy states that if a council party, or if we are called on by name, no, I'm, no, that's not what the policy states. The policy states that if we are called on by name-
Correct.
-we have the right to respond, and I'm going to-
From a council member-
I am going to respectfully respond, you are free to read the-
You're out of order, Councilwoman Green, you're out of order.
No, no, you are not going to, you have already implemented rules tonight for the commission, no.
Councilwoman Green, you're out of order.
You have already implemented rules tonight for the commission.
Every time, Councilwoman Green, you're out of order.
You will not deny me the right to respond.
Five-minute recess.
Ask her, the city-
All right, we're going to call this meeting back to order. We have an unprecedented kind of issue here, so I'm going to yield this three minutes. I disagree with it. It says so in the agenda, if you read how citizen comments are supposed to work. Since my colleague has threatened that they're going to talk over me no matter what, I'm just going to yield the three minutes. It's my decision as a council president, I'm going to do that, and then we're going to have to work on the policy and procedure to fix this, because it says clearly in the beginning of the agenda how it works when the council member responds to a resident. I read that paragraph, everybody heard me read that paragraph. It says the same three minutes that are used right there. So if ever a council member, anybody wants to respond to a resident during the citizens' comment time, your response is confined to that three minutes. Look at any agenda, it says it, and I read it every time. But I see we're not going to go anywhere, so I'm going to yield this three minutes to my colleague. Councilwoman Green. Isn't that a? There you are.
What I'm most disappointed about, council president, is instead of you taking ownership of what the policy and procedure says, you will arrogantly disrespect me when you violated our own policy. And so I will do what policy allows and respond to the resident. I'm very disappointed in how you handled this meeting tonight. Thank you, Richard Graham. I'm very pleased to see the first diversity commission come to the city of Westland, which was set up to ensure racial equity and equality for all Westland residents, and also to ensure anti-racism principles and practices in city hiring, city operations, city contracts, et cetera. It was birthed as a result of the resolution that I put forward to declare racism a public health crisis, and it is one of my most proudest moments as a city councilwoman in the city of Westland, being elected as the first black woman to city council. I'm disappointed that although I did ask the mayor in June, July, or, excuse me, July, August, and then again in writing in September, to allow me to sit on the commission, he denied me that, that right, which the charter allows him to make selective choices, but this is something that I had to fight to bring to the city of Westland. And when I say fight, the resolution called for a diversity commission. The members of city council who sit here today, including the mayor, with the exception of Councilman Hersberg, were completely against even allowing the diversity commission in the city of Westland. The resolution that I put forward was rewritten and it removed it. And had it not been for me organizing a campaign and calling on Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib, Senator Erica Geis, Marshall Bullock, Senator Marshall Bullock, the Michigan Legislative Black Caucus, Michigan United, NAACP, the Inkster Ministerial Alliance, and many, many Westland residents came in and demanded that they hear the voice of the people, we would not have gotten that resolution passed in the manner that it was, which called for the diversity commission that the mayor has refused to allow me to sit on, although he has appointed multiple councilpeople to commissions who sit here tonight. He is on multiple commissions himself. Historically, city councilpeople have been put on commissions, and I think it's just a, it's, it's very disappointing, but I am glad that we are one step further to true equality in our city and recognizing the voice of all people, and I will continue- And I will continue to stand up for my community, whether the mayor allows me a seat at this table or not. The residents put me in this seat, and I'm going to continue to stand up for the residents of this community. And so, with that, I will finish my closing comments during, or excuse me, my comments during closing comments. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience?
Thank you. I feel a little awkward coming in at this point because I'm going to have a little probably different spin than what's been going on. I just want to say thank you. I'm Emily Baumann. For those who knew, I was on the ballot this past November for possibly state representative. And I just, this experience has been amazing, this experience of being able to get to know people, to meet people that I hadn't met before this year. I had the opportunity to work on a congressional campaign earlier in the year as a campaign manager and then actually being a candidate myself. And I respect every one of you that has ever run for an office and had to go through that and being able to talk to people and learn about it and dive in with both feet like I did and learn it on the ground in real life has been amazing. And I just, having been able to go into every single precinct in Westland and Wayne and talk to people and knock on all the doors that I did and be able to ask people and learn about what they're looking for was just really an amazing and a wonderful experience. And I told people and I promised people that I'm not going to be just a name on the ballot and then go away. I live in the city. I've lived here for a number of years. I feel strongly about this city, and I didn't realize how much I felt strongly about the city until this experience. And I'm not, I don't want to go away. I want to serve my city and serve my community in ways that I probably have never even imagined that I could. And I'm hoping that I can learn to, learn to get to know everybody a ounce in a different, in a new way and be one of those voices that actually can bridge some of the things that are going on because that is something that I was willing to offer at a state level, was to be able to bridge that conversation and be able to use my skills that God has given me to be able to say, "Let's ask questions. Let's talk to people. Let's bring things together and be able to serve each other in a way that just makes changes and gets resolutions that are getting us out of our momentary need right now." And I appreciate Ray talking about the mental health because that's such a strong passion of mine as well. And it is, it is the ability to say thank you, to give gratitude. And I just, I saw something, I think it was on City of Westland today, someone, it was on the Facebook thing, that just talked about how to say something different, how to say things in a gratitude way as opposed to, "And I'm sorry." Was that on City of Westland or where was it? Something where instead of saying, "I'm sorry for something," saying, "Thank you." And I think that was really powerful and it just helps us get ourselves out of what I call our lizard brain and move it into what I call my hippo brain, so that we can slow down and listen and be part of this. So, I'm hoping I can be part of something greater than I've ever been. And again, thank you to the city of Westland, to the residents for actually welcoming when I did knock on the doors and talk to me. And whether you agreed with me, whether you voted for me, it's all good. I really appreciate having the opportunity to meet people, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
First off, I want to tell the mayor, thank you for appointing the four residents, well, three residents from down in the southeast corner. This will be our representation since we don't have any other, anybody else representing them. Mr. Warren, Ms. Eleanor Ford, and Ms. Lena Horn, Lena Nichols. I've known them for most of my life. Now, to these arguments about Mr. Warren being placed on this diversity panel, my issue is not with Mr. Warren. It's with the fact that a lot of people do not know the history of black people. A lot of people sit around and they remember what they read, but they never lived through it. I lived through the '67 riots. I lived through the '63 school desegregation. I bet you there's not, at least Peter hasn't, Ms. Green hasn't, you, 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 you. You don't know anything about it because you didn't live through it. You don't know what it's like to be black in a predominantly white, privileged city. So, anybody who wants to talk about that, you talk to the people that struggle, Ms. Ford, Mr. Warren, Ms. Nichols, you talk to the black, yeah, you can videotape it. I don't care. I'm not running for office. Are you having a lot to do for anything in the city?
Ms. Wilson.
No, you haven't, and I'm sorry.
You can't do that.
Through the chair.
I know, and I just corrected it.
And I said, I apologized, and I said, "Through the chair."
Ms. Wilson, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Wilson, you have to address the chair.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm just upset with the fact that there's so much hate for one person in this city that you would divide a whole community, one whole community. We don't have representation on the southeast end. We have a homeowners association that because of this hatred, you don't speak to me, don't speak for me because you can't. Now, I don't care if you don't clap, it don't make no difference. I know what I'm saying.
Is there anyone else in?
I've been here.
Is there anyone else in the audience?
Did you get that?
Hold on. Let's have some order. Is there anyone else in the audience? Mr. Perry? Thank you. Is there anyone else? No, no, I'm not calling you up. I'm asking you to keep it down for me. Is there anyone else in the audience? Okay. We are going to close citizens' comments and move to comments from the administration. Mayor.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to the members of the audience that are still with us here tonight. Just a couple of things. First of all, Council, when you sat down tonight, you got a blue folder in front of you. And what this is, is part of the process of appointing the new DEI Board and working on the city's ethics committee and updating the website. We decided to update the city's Board and Commissions Handbook. And I'd like to thank Shannon Akron in my office. She's worked for a long time on this in getting the handbook cleaned up and the website cleaned up. And she's worked with Stephanie and the Personnel Department to really clean this up. So, I wanted to give you guys a copy of it. This is a generic version. As we appoint members to the boards and commissions, they'll get a packet that's similar to this that's kind of customized to the board that they're going to sit on. So, doesn't look like much, a lot of work went into it. And I think it'll, it'll help our new Board and Commissioners understand their roles and how they, they help the city move in a positive manner. A couple other things is, first, Council, there wasn't much talk about it, but I appreciate Council supporting the Lieutenants and Sergeants Association. They re-upped with a four-year deal for us. And the city, even though our resources have been limited, we've been able now to reach agreements with four of the five city's labor departments, obviously AFSCME and UAW and both the POM and Lieutenants and Sergeants Association. So, earlier tonight, we set our, we set our sanitation numbers for the next 10 years. Now, we've done that with our labor forces as well for the next several years. So, as we continue to use our financial outlooks, the more numbers that we can make solid, it really helps us make smart decisions. And they've done, the Lieutenants and Sergeants have done a great job, and we appreciate what they do for the city. Another thing that didn't get much talk was the Council approving the bond sale tonight for the, the general pension plan. So, there were some comments that they came from in the audience, but they're really, those comments weren't fair, they weren't deserved. The city of Westland obviously does have unfunded liabilities, just like every other community in Michigan. And when you look at Westland, we're the, you know, basically the 10th largest community in the state. When you look at our unfunded mandates, we're right about the 10th largest unfunded mandates or the unfunded liabilities. The difference between us and other communities is that we're actually doing something about it. Earlier, the gentleman said that in my tenure that we've ruined the pension plan or whatever. We've actually worked with, with the unions, we've worked with the city council, and we've actually changed our pension numbers quite a bit. What we'll be doing now with, with this bond sale is we're going to be making all of those retirees whole. I mean, everybody that retired from the city that the city made promises to, we, as a community, will be able to honor those commitments. We're going to take advantage of the city's low debt rate. We've taken on very little debt over the years and combined with historic low interest rates, we're going to be able to fund this pension plan for, this will be everybody except for police and fire, and there's a dedicated millage for that. We'll have that funded without having to go to the residents and asking for a dedicated millage or raise taxes to do it. And we'll be able to take advantage of these low interest rates and actually, over the 20-year cycle of this bond, our payments will actually be lower than we're currently paying right now. So, once again, I think this is a good, good deal. There aren't many communities doing this because there's not many communities that have the debt load, they have the bonding capability, and they've got the, you know, the foresight. I think this is something that city council, it didn't get a lot of attention, but this is something you should, you should feel proud about. And, you know, moving forward, we're going to continue to, to look at those unfunded liabilities. And I think that, you know, with what we've done with our retirees as far as moving them to Medicare Advantage, coming back with this, I think that the city's really, really starting to move that number. It's going to be interesting to watch the dashboard change moving forward. And then, just the last thing is, actually, two last things. One is, there was a lot of talk about the DEI Board. I hope the residents are proud of the Board as I am. When you heard me read the resumes, and I just did a short resume, I could have read on and on about each, each member. We have a really diverse Board. We have a very talented Board. We have a good makeup of geographic area of the city, ethnicity, age, gender. Is it perfect? I think when you, when you look at a city our size, it's tough to do anything perfect, but I really feel good about it. And I know that they all want to serve, they're eager to serve. I'm trying not to be heavy-handed on this. I wanted to work organically and make decisions, you know, that recommendations to the city that we can actually, you know, make progress on. And, you know, it was said that I kept a councilperson off this. Councilpeople don't get appointed to boards and commissions. There are councilmembers that serve as liaisons to different boards, and the council could decide they'd like a councilmember to be a liaison to this Board, but that's not a decision that the mayor makes. So, I think that there's opportunity there, but it would require that the councilperson work with her colleagues to see if that could happen. But there's plenty of room at the table. The meeting's going to be open to the public, and I encourage everybody to participate in this. Then, the final thing is, obviously, the governor's epidemic order yesterday is going to change a lot of things. And we're working internally, our team is working on what we can do for the city. And obviously, we have to try to figure out how, who can work from home and who can work from here. And we did a pretty good job, I think, of shutting things down, keeping things going, then getting it right back up the last time. So, we're going to, we're going to work with our unions just like we did before in Council. Probably by this time tomorrow, we'll have some information to you on exactly what we're going to be doing with that. So, it's still kind of, there's a lot of moving pieces here, so, but we'll definitely communicate with you on exactly what we're going to be doing. Thank you.
All right. Anything from the city attorney today?
Yeah, let me, Council President, thank you. I'll pass on a couple of comments. I'll pick up on the comment from the mayor on the DEI Board and the appointments. Your council resolution gave the appointment of that, the members to that body to the mayor. There are some boards and commissions, either by statute or ordinance, that the mayor nominates and the council confirms, but that was not what you did in DEI, the DEI resolution that you guys crafted. So, I just want to make that distinction for those at home who might not appreciate that distinction. Additionally, it was mentioned that Priority Waste was merging or buying Midwest Sanitation, and that's not correct. There is no, Priority Waste is a separate entity. If Mr. Ruthenberg goes to work for them as an employee, he does so, whatever they work out. But in terms of corporate existence, Priority Waste is not merging, is not responsible for the debts or the liabilities of Midwest Sanitation, and it's not buying the assets of Midwest Sanitation. So, I wanted to clear that up for anybody at home who, who heard that and thought that's what was occurring. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to comments from the Council. We begin with Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be brief tonight. I wanted to clarify on item six. I voted no on the municipal refuse collection services. We went, conversation got out of whack a little bit there. For me, it wasn't about the amendment, about the out clause. I would have been fine with it. For me, it was the 10-year length. I think the last time something came up for 10 years, council, we had a very different council makeup, and just about all of them never wanted to do anything that long. We couldn't even get enough councilmembers to do something for five years. So, the things I learned at those times, it really stuck with me. I think things can just change really fast. We know that with COVID this year, how the budget's going to change. We're pretty much maxed out at the millage rate to pay for this, and if anything changes, we're going to be in hot water. So, I do think 10 years is too long, but that's just my opinion. I do think the company's going to do a good job, no matter what. There's good things in there. We can hold them accountable if there's issues in the neighborhoods with pickup, so I'm not, not too worried about that. And then, I want to congratulate all the new DEI Board members, and I want to thank Councilwoman Green for putting forward that resolution a couple months ago that really got this conversation going. I do hope it leads to change. It's a big accomplishment for the city. First things first, I would ask you guys to look at the hiring practices here at City Hall. I think you might be able to find some things there to make a difference. We've talked about trying to diversify the city workforce for longer than I've been on Council, and it seems that, that nothing's changed. So, I hope you guys can take a look at that and make a difference. Next, I want to congratulate Nelsarini Strategy Group for the grant writing contract. She's been very responsive lately. And I mentioned earlier about bike lights. We're looking at, we're looking for a grant to get bike lights and give them out for free. There's been some talk about maybe requiring them, but, you know, I think it's about saving lives. If we can get people, if they're out there crossing in the middle of the road, it's dark out. I saw somebody last week, I was going down Warren, he was a half a mile ahead of me. He had a bike light. I could see him all the way, very clear. Makes it a lot safer. So, that's it for me. Council President, please let us know as soon as possible if we're going to be meeting virtually or in person. Thank you.
Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. I'd like to start tonight by notifying the community that our Wayne County Executive, Warren Evans, has donated 20,000 face masks to Westland residents free of charge. So, if anyone is in need of face masks, especially with what is going on, unfortunately, the numbers are rising again with COVID, please contact the office of the mayor at 734-467-3200. I also wanted to, due to the very disappointing comment that was made by our council president, Jim Hart, leadership, in leadership, there is a expectation and requirement as a good leader that you own the times when you are incorrect, when you get it wrong, instead of throwing someone under the bus, as he arrogantly did at the, when we came back from the recess that he caused without, he called, excuse me, without conferring with any of his colleagues. I'm very disappointed with the arrogant manner that he basically stated that this is unprecedented and he will go ahead and allow me three minutes. If this were not policy, I would not have insisted for the opportunity to speak. And what you all don't realize, and some of you know if you've come to these meetings, but they have done, the city council, there's two members here, but the mayor, there has been ample discrimination and retaliation against me by the men that I serve with, and I have proof, and I can prove it, and they know it. And I could have sued the city of Westland with, with some of the things that happened to me that they were involved in, but I chose not to do it. But this diversity commission is something that I fought for in this city because, as Councilman Hersberg alluded to, the diversity in the city of Westland is almost nonexistent. Councilman Hersberg alluded to, the diversity in the city of Westland is almost nonexistent. I'm the first black woman elected, excuse me. When you look at every branch of government in this city, it is very minimal diversity. So, to have to literally, and when I tell you, fight to bring this commission to the city of Westland, I was told, and I will quote Council President Hart, when he told me, he did me a favor by even putting it on the agenda. I sat in meetings with Mayor Wild and Council President Hart and Councilman Gabow when they lied to the members of the NAACP and the Inkster Ministerial Alliance and told them that the charter was the reason why they could not allow this diversity commission to move forward. And I had to call that lie out. And I have been fighting just to be treated as an equal since getting elected, and they will never know what that feels like because they don't experience it. And they do not treat each other the way that they treat me. But when I asked God to use me to help people, I knew it wasn't going to be easy. And I will not bend or break to anything that they say or do, or who likes and who doesn't like, because that's not what I'm here for. I'm here to make a difference in this city for our residents, and that's exactly what I'm going to continue to do to the best of my ability. And so, I will read the section, just so people are not misled into thinking that there was somehow a abuse of authority or anything of that nature. We have a policy and procedures manual. There's a few sentences under section 14, Public Comment Policies. The gentleman who was speaking, Richard Graham, he was making a public comment. The council president opened the floor up to public comment. Under Public Comment Policies, item B, it states, "Only the person recognized by the chair shall be allowed to speak during the public comments and request portion of the agenda without counsel and/or commenting unless a question is directed through the chair by that person toward a specific council member, the mayor, or other city official. All city officials may elect to respond to questions directed to them through the chair." Mr. Graham said through the chair to Councilwoman Green. Additionally, "The mayor or designated in the mayor's absence or any council member may elect to respond to any comment directed toward them or any city official at any time during a meeting in order to correct an error or misstatement of fact. The response from a council member, mayor, or city official shall be limited to the same time, which is three minutes, that citizens are allowed." When you all come up to speak, you get three minutes. It states that when we respond, we get three minutes. So, I was disrespected tonight. The way he abruptly stopped this meeting, that was what was unprecedented. I'm very disappointed. I'm very disappointed. And I'm disappointed in how you opened this meeting to imply that I am, you have to do me a favor by treating me like a human being and allowing me the benefit of what policy and procedure states. Many of the policies and procedures that we have and that have been documented were documented because of the discrepancies and how they treated me versus they treated each other. The reason why these commissions are now posted on the city website, that was because of what they did, the mayor, did to me, and it's all documented. When I got elected, that wasn't there. When the mayor refused to allow me to sit on a commission, I FOIA'd the information, and he refused to tell me what commissions were even open. I had to go to the city attorney and have a meeting with him and try to get the information from him. And instead of answering my FOIA, what they did was they put all the commissions on the city website. Finally, you can see who's on these boards. And so, anyhow, again, the diversity commission is something that I am so proud of because I had to really fight hard for that, and that is something that I know will benefit this community long after I no longer have aspirations to serve in the city of Westland. And so, I'm very grateful for that. I'm grateful for the Westland residents who showed up at the meeting during the pandemic to say, "You will not speak for us. You will hear from the community." I'm so grateful for other officials who have jurisdiction in the city of Westland who came to the meetings and demanded that they do the right thing by the people that they claim to represent, because they did not want a diversity commission in the city of Westland, and it was made clear. They took it out of the original resolution that I put forward. And so, for the mayor to deny me the opportunity to serve on the commission, yes, it is hurtful. Will it stop me? Absolutely not. I was built for this. And I will say, there is a comment in terms of the mayor saying, "City council people can't sit on the commission." Councilwoman Andrea Rakowski currently sits on the Nankin Transit Commission. She was appointed by Mayor Wild and city council approved it. Councilman Jim Hart was on Nankin Transit prior to Andrea Rakowski. Councilman Jim Gabow has sat on Nankin Transit, so has previous council people. Councilman Londo currently sits on the Youth Assistance Council. That's on the website. If you go on the Board and Commissions page, you'll find Youth Assistance Council. He's on there right now. Judge McConnell, another elected official, on there right now, all came through the mayor. A previous councilwoman was on the youth council. Mayor Wild, who's also another elected official in Westland, he's on the sanitation commission. We had to approve him. Previous councilmen sat on that commission. The DDA, right now, Mayor Wild is an elected official, he is on the DDA, and Councilman Gabow was put on the DDA as a council representative by Mayor Wild. So, when you see some of what is going on at these meetings, it is me demanding and standing up for myself and demanding that you're not going to run over me and you're not going to treat me any type of way. But the charter does allow the mayor to appoint whom he would like. And again, I'm a big girl. This is not going to stop me. As one of the residents stated, he'll be at the meetings, I will too. And I actually have been contacted by residents who have asked me to start my own diversity task force in the city of Westland, which I am empowered to do because of at least one person that Mayor Wild put on that commission, that people have a fear that his appointment was intentionally done to work against the efforts of that commission, what the commission was put in place for, which was the diversity commission to incorporate anti-racism principles and practices in our city operations, hiring, employee education. This person sat in a meeting and stated that he did not believe the city of Westland needed to educate employees on diversity or racial sensitivity. And this is who Mayor Wild put on that commission while even denying me the right to serve. So, there are things that take place behind the scenes, that you, years of things that have taken place that you will never know, never understand, and you may not even care about. But there are many residents who are grateful that I'm here as a voice, and I'm going to continue to serve. And in closing, I just wanted to clarify a statement that was made at our last council meeting by Councilman Gabow. I made a comment in terms of the fiscal responsibility, similar to what was discussed tonight about, you know, one of the contracts. I stated on the record that the city of Westland has never maintained a balanced budget. There has been campaign slogan that people run for office on, oh, 14, 11, 12, 13 years, balanced budget. Westland has never had a balanced budget. And what was stated was, yes, we have because we have to give it to the state every year. Yeah, you have to give a balanced budget to the state every year. We don't operate within the parameters of that budget as soon as that budget is approved. We, city council, are hit with one after another, this is an emergency. Can you get this? Can you approve that? If you want to know if Westland has a balanced budget, get the operating statement with our closing figures, our annual closing figures. Then you compare where we close at every year to what we put on the budget when we approve the budget. It's completely different. The city of Westland right now is in a payment agreement with the state of Michigan because our retirement program is so severely underfunded that we had to enter into an emergency payment agreement. So, when these statements are going forward and they're saying, oh, well, you know, that's an attack or slanderous, the truth is not an attack. Residents need to know, you all have no idea what we're doing in here with your tax dollars. And I would love to be a yes 99% of the time, but with my experience and understanding, I will not support something that I think could put this city or taxpayers at a detriment. And so, I just wanted you to understand, although we approve a balanced budget every year, that does not mean that Westland is functioning, nor do we ever function with a balanced budget, any fiscal year. We've never done that. Well, we've never done, that has not been done for multiple decades in the city of Westland. And I would just encourage you all to get involved, start coming to our meetings. There is an election next year for city council people, including myself, and then also the mayor will be running for reelection. We are put in office, or we're supposed to be in office, to be your representatives. That means when we get here, our job is to not only financially handle this city in a way that is beneficial to you, but also to come in here and ensure that we are voting in something that is favorable versus something that is in our benefit. And I would caution you by listening to politicians, do not believe anything that we tell you in terms of who we are. Our vote shows you who we are. Watch how we vote. Question what a politician votes, because that's where our interest is. And I would ask you all to look, if we don't show up for you, and, you know, do not support politicians who tell you a nice story, or song or dance, or come to your school or church, or maybe bring you some donuts, and then, as soon as the election is over, you never see them. You'll see all of us, you know, knocking hard in just a few months. But you need to ask yourself, have you benefited? Do you think that we've been a benefit to you? And I'm speaking as a politician too, and politicians will never tell you that. You all have the power, the people combined have the power, you have the power to organize and get us out of office, you need to use it. And if you don't like the representation you receive, then run for office. And also, start finding out what's going on with this city money, because it's only like the same one or two people who come and they're speaking out, but more people should be involved and interested in what's going on. And Mr. Graham, I just want to say thank you to you, because I know what was slander, to use the word that the mayor used tonight, what was slanderous was what happened to you and your wife, the allegations that were made about you and your wife, because you absolutely are not a racist or any of the neo-Nazi allegations that Arthur Warren so proudly took pride in authoring that story and then paying for it to be shipped all over the city, 20,000 copies during election season. That was completely grossly negligent to your character. I have known you for multiple years, and if that were the case, I would have already had a discussion with you to some regard. I know that to not be true. And so, I thank you for caring enough to show up to our meetings. So, thank you so much.
In regards to the budget, the only thing I'm going to say is that we do have a balanced budget, and we've had a balanced budget. The budget balance right now, unfunded, or the unallocated fund balance, is somewhere, I believe, in about the $6 million, $7 million range for an unallocated fund balance. When I first got on this city council, that wasn't the case. As our city clerk can attest to, we had a $200,000 fund balance. So, in the time since I've been sitting on council, we've worked very hard to make sure that this city is financially sound. We keep hearing references to the unfunded pension liabilities. Tonight, we just took care of that. I mean, there's still more steps to be done before the bond actually gets sold, but it reduces our costs over the life of that bond. And the reason that it shows up as an unfunded liability was, I want to say about five, six years ago, the state changed how the reporting under Gatsby has to be allocated for those liabilities. So, when the state changed that and they put the rules in about the funding, yes, we worked out a payment plan, and we were actually the first ones, the first community, that had a significant unfunded pension liability to be approved by the state with the plan so that we could get out of the deficit that was in the unfunded liabilities, the long-term liabilities, for pensions for the employees. This bond, in essence, eliminates the need for that payment program back to the state and funds the pension program for all of the retirees that are in the system, because the system now is closed. That's the other part of this, is that there are, moving forward, and it's going to take years before all of the people that are currently in the system are passed, before the city realizes that there is no more pension liabilities for the MERS employees. In regards to the 10-year term on the waste contract, council received the RFP before it went out for bid, and in the RFP, it clearly stated the 10-year terms that the city was looking for in the contract for the bid before it went out, and were asked to comment on that prior to it going out. There were no comments. There were no objections to going out for a bid on a 10-year contract back when council received that, back in August, prior to companies going out and placing their bids based on that RFP. So, that's all I got to say on that. In regards to a couple of other things, I'd like to congratulate and thank all those that were selected to sit on our new Diversity Equity and Inclusion Board. It's much appreciated. I'd also like to congratulate and thank Caitlin Riley and Matthew Teransky for serving on the Economic Development Authority, the Tifa Board, Brownfield Development Board. All three boards are co-mingled with the same people on those boards. So, again, congratulations and thanks to those two individuals. And then, my colleague, Councilman Hersberg, made a comment in regards to the Bike Network Grant that we approved, the city's portion of that payment on. And I'm hopeful that we can get started. I've been, during the past two budget sessions, I've been bringing up the need for bike lanes within the city and a non-motorized transit plan, and we keep kicking it down the road and kicking it down the road. So, hopefully now we'll be able to get this moving forward and see some results and get some access for non-motorized vehicles in the city. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
So, I do serve on the Nankin Transit Authority. I was not appointed by the mayor, I was elected by my peers. Every city that participates in the Nankin Transit Authority has two representatives from their city, one from their sitting government, and one that is a citizen. In Westland's case, that is Michael Harris, who serves alongside of me. Just wanted to make sure everybody understood how that functions. I'm proud of the DEI, and I'm proud of the resolution that was brought forward by my A lot of times, when it's talked about, the resolution, it's they all and changed it or did whatever to it or met, whatever. I didn't have a hand in changing your original document. I didn't email anything about the original document because that would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act. I like the document you presented. I also like the legal advice that our attorney gave us, because it isn't in our charter for the council to make a board, and that was the primary change. But nonetheless, we have a resolution. But nonetheless, we have a resolution that did move forward with asking our mayor to form this board, and I unprecedentedly asked for a time limit, because it was the right thing to do at the time, and it still would be the right thing, as there's vacancies in boards. So, my feeling on the DEI is such, that as legislators, you're tasked with finding opportunity. And we did that. We built a larger table, and we added chairs to that table. And the title of the board or commission is diversity, which I think is quite diverse now, equity, so that everybody has the same voice, and inclusion, so that those who didn't have a voice previously now have a voice. It is a suggesting body, and because it is such, it should be a body that's outside of your legislators. I think it's important that we attend, and hear, and learn, because I make no qualms about the fact that I am not a black woman. I am a white woman. I have had privilege. I have the privilege of sitting up here, because you have elected me. You've given me a voice. You've given me the opportunity to represent you. If I sat on that board, I would be taking away the opportunity for someone else to have a voice, somebody who is not me. So, that's what we are charged with. I look forward to learning from the DEI. I look forward to their suggestions. I think we all can learn very much from them as individuals, as a city organization, as a governmental institution, of how to bring diversity, equity, and inclusion to our city. It has been far too long. It's crazy to believe that it's 2020, and we're just now getting on board with diversity, but it's happening. And I'm proud, and I thank the individuals that applied. You don't have an easy job. It's not hard to stand up in your city and say, this is wrong, and this is wrong, and this is wrong, and this is wrong, but it's necessary. And I hope that your suggestions are implemented swiftly, and that you can feel a sense of pride of serving on that commission, and a sense of pride in your city. But all of the meetings are open. They're all open. So, if you do have input for that committee, I suggest you attend. I'm sure there'll be virtual here shortly, because it's about diversity, equity, and inclusion. Thank you.
Councilman McDermott.
Well, good evening. So, I have a list of comments here tonight. So, you know, first off, again, I'd like to reiterate that with regards to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Board, I supported the DEI board being created, whether it was a part of the resolution, or was going to end up as a standalone, outside of the resolution, getting created unequivocally. And I thank Councilwoman Green for bringing that forward. I do think that she should have been a liaison to the board, if not a direct appointee, because we don't appoint council people directly to the board. I think working in a advisory capacity as like a representative of council, I would not have been opposed to that, and I said that several months ago. I think we missed an opportunity with the DEI board to have citizen oversight to work with our police department. That's something that I've said, you know, on multiple occasions. I'd like to see us work hand-in-hand with the PD to have a citizen oversight board or a review board, and I think that could have been folded into the DEI board. It was something I intended to, you know, bring up back when we had the initial discussion in July and August, but unfortunately, things kind of got a little sidetracked on that, and I didn't think it was an appropriate time. A couple of different things here, too. We saw the governor's orders come out last night, and I just want to reiterate that, you know, how important a mask is, something that we're all wearing tonight, something that thankfully, all of you in the audience are being responsible in wearing. COVID is a very serious thing. Many of you have probably had a loved one, or a family member, or friend, someone you know personally who's been affected by COVID. And, you know, I know it's going to be very hard with the holidays coming up, with Thanksgiving and Christmas, not to get together in large gatherings with our family and friends, but this is a very serious situation, and the virus does not discriminate. And that's why wearing a mask is so important. That's why continuing to practice proper social distancing guidelines is important, and that's why the governor implemented the new recommendations to the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services to put new restrictions on bars and restaurants, movie theaters, bowling alleys. It's not easy. It's not easy for the small business owners who own each of those establishments. It's not easy for each one of the workers who work at those establishments, and it's certainly not easy for, you know, all of us as people. But these guidelines were put in place not to hurt anybody's business, not to go after anybody politically, but to keep us safe. And I'm thankful that the governor put in and took the initiative that she did, even if the state legislature isn't always willing to go along with her. In regards to COVID, too, we have a federal body, the United States Senate, which for over six months has been sitting on the HEROES Act. And if you're wondering or unfamiliar with what the HEROES Act is, it is a second stimulus package that should have been passed in June, when the first stimulus package began to run out the CARES Act. With the HEROES Act, it would provide critical, critical funding for workers who have been displaced or laid off. It would provide an extension of that extra $600 for unemployed workers. It would provide additional financial resources for families, for homeowners who are in distress, who may be on the brink of losing their home, for municipalities, just like the city of Westland, to be able to keep our budgets whole, to be able to keep police officers on the streets, and firefighters, and parks and rec departments open. And unfortunately, one branch of our government, the legislative branch, and specifically the United States Senate within the legislative branch, has sat on the HEROES Act and has refused to act. So, I would urge you not only to call our two senators here in the state of Michigan, Gary Peters and Senator Debbie Stavano, but to call senators in every state. Take some time out to do that. I do that during my lunch hour at work, because I'm fortunate enough to be able to work from home, and I pick a senator and I call them, to let them know my opinion, that we need urgent action, that people, that families, that workers, that small businesses, that municipalities, just like Westland, all across the country, who have been impacted by a virus that does not discriminate. We need action by our legislative branch, by our executive branch, to pass the HEROES Act, and to make sure that people, to make sure that small businesses and small business owners, their workforce, and that communities just like Westland are being taken care of. So, I would hope that you would join me in calling senators around the country and demanding action on the HEROES Act, which they've been sitting on since June, six months of inaction by our federal legislative body. I'd like to wish a happy belated Veterans Day to everybody who served in the Armed Forces in our community. Obviously, we were not in session here as a council when Veterans Day took place, and a special thank you to my colleague, Councilman Hart, who is a veteran of our Armed Forces, and so thank you to him for his service, and thank you to everybody in the community who has served in any capacity in any of the branches of our Armed Forces. So, thank you for your service on that. I'd like to thank the clerk's office and everybody who works in the clerk's office, and everybody who volunteered their time and energy for running a free, fair, and very smooth election. Without the work of the clerk, and all of you in the community who signed up to work at a precinct, this would obviously not be possible. So, thank you for every election that you've worked at, or if this was your first election that you've worked at, thank you for, you know, signing up. We need you to keep volunteering, to keep our elections free and fair and operating smoothly. So, thank you for everything that you've done with that. Getting back to the pandemic for a second, we know that this has impacted people quite gravely, and if you, or if somebody you know, is in need of food assistance during this time, Gleaners Community Food Bank is running free food giveaways throughout the holiday season, and really, they've been doing so throughout the pandemic. And you can find out where some of those free food giveaways are at by going to Gleaners' website at gcfb.org. Again, that's gcfb.org. And then, on a final note, I would just like to, you know, make it known that when there are, you know, personal attacks, whether it's brought up against any one of us, or certainly anybody in the audience who's not elected and who is just a resident of the community, when their family is brought into the situation. We've seen that unfortunately, with Mr. Graham's family being, you know, referenced before, I think, inappropriately, and I think attacks from, and I think inappropriate remarks by, you know, some of us on council at times, against people in the audience, and vice versa. I think it's gotten out of hand, and it's really unfortunate when that happens, whether it happens to any one of us, or when it happens to certainly any non-elected resident in the community or their family. So, you know, I would hope that we can all rise above that and be better than that in the future. Thank you.
Councilman Landau.
Thanks, President Hart. I'll start off tonight, thank you everybody for attending tonight, appreciate you sticking around. Also, congratulations to Matthew Teransky and Caitlin Riley for, congratulations to them for either their appointment or reappointments to the Economic Development Board, the various boards. We appreciate your expertise and look forward to having you serve our community and wish you nothing but success. Congratulations to, and thank you to each of the board members for stepping up to serve on the newly formed Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Board. Looks like six or seven of you are still in the room, so thank you all very much. You all also have a various set of skills that really are going to serve our city well. I want to thank the mayor for making this a priority, and then bringing a diverse set of individuals to the table. Not only do we have Caucasians and African-Americans, we have Hispanics and Arab-Americans on there as well, so every voice, not every voice, but many of the voices in our community will be heard. I don't know if the mayor mentioned this tonight during his presentation, but there will be a strategic planning session December 5th. Is that correct? December 5th? December 5th. It's going to be virtually, and it'll be conducted with a new DEI board with assistance from Plant Moran and the Michigan Municipal League, to help guide this board, educate this board on diversity, equity, and inclusion, hear from the residents, hear from us even, and see where we want to go in the future. And then, the mayor mentioned, you know, a lot of work has been put into these various boards and commissions, so I want to thank his office, and thank particularly Shannon Akron, who works in his office. Been in there a few times and seen she's had stacks and stacks of papers, and has been working on these boards, so we appreciate her and the mayor's office. Thank you to the city clerk's office and all the election workers for running a very efficient and safe election. Last meeting, I kind of stumbled on my words, but what I was trying to say was, you know, for about a month, at least three weeks or so, we had a line, a long line in the lobby. Definitely for the last few weeks, there was a long, long line, you know, coming and going. Not one person complained. We get complaints about seemingly everything, and we did not get one complaint about that. As far as I know, the clerk's office didn't really receive any complaints, for how long they had to wait for various information that they may have needed. So, that's a testament to your staff, Richard, Mr. Block, and we appreciate you guys. I know I sent this via email to you guys, but I want to say it publicly as well, because you guys did a fantastic job with this election. Results were in by 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, which was insane. I was shocked to see those.
Me, too.
So, thank you again to the clerk's office. I was also happy to see the contract on Osirini Strategies for a two-year term, so we don't have to see that for two years. They've done an incredible job with securing grant dollars, but not just securing the grant dollars, but assisting and consulting with the administration to work through these grants, all the paperwork that goes into them. And they also have kept the council, like Councilman Hersberg mentioned, they've done a great job of keeping us updated on a regular basis, whether it be via email or right here at the podium. Want to thank the negotiating team from both the administration and the Westland Lieutenants and Sergeants Association for coming to an agreement on a new collective bargaining agreement. As was discussed earlier, they had some collaborative negotiations where there's some give-and-take on both sides, so I'm proud to say that there's an agreement in place. And then, with the recent news of the governor's order, please support our local businesses with carryout if you can. They took a serious hit during the first shutdown, and they can't afford to take another one, so I know a lot of those businesses are out there trying to gear up and get ready for, hopefully, all of us going out there and supporting them. And with that, I know I mentioned before that the Westland Chamber of Commerce has free personal protection equipment kits to distribute to our local businesses. Last week or two weeks ago, myself, Council President Hart, and Councilwoman Rukowski delivered some personally to some local businesses. I have a few in my car. If anybody wants to stick around until the meeting, if you have any local businesses that you frequent, I'd be happy to hand those off to you, or you can have them contact the Westland Chamber of Commerce. They are free, you do not have to be a chamber member to receive them, and I think they have a good, a good couple hundred of them left. So, with the recent surge in cases right now, I think it's very important that these businesses have them. Other than that, just want to say happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Please practice safety, and I will see you soon.
Thank you, Council President Protem. I'd like to thank you also tonight for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to thank, of course, the DEI board. Thank you for your service. We really look forward to your input, your collective skills and talents that you bring to bear. I think you're going to, you definitely need it, and we're definitely looking forward to your input. You have a lot to do, you have a tall job, and it's no easy task, but we have all the utmost faith and confidence, and looking forward to seeing your involvement. Couple other things to Caitlin and Matt, congratulations again for the EDC, Brownfield, Tifa Board. Again, lending your talents and abilities to our boards and commissions are very much appreciated. Had a couple doozies here today, so I think we'll address a couple of them. There's a lot of times when we hear some comments, we hear a piece of it, but not the entire story. So, like, one comment was thrown out where I did somebody a favor, you know. Really, what happened was I got something at the last minute, broke council policy and procedure to get it expedited and put on an agenda, and I called it a professional courtesy. But that's not the way that was portrayed. See, the story was twisted and made to sound like it was something that it wasn't. And that happens a lot, we're finding, okay? There's a couple other issues, a couple other stories, that pieces were moved, and tone and inflection was changed, and pieces are changed, and next thing you know, it sounds negative when it was innocuous. Another example is when we did have that resolution. The resolution was great, we moved it forward. That's the one I actually put on and broke council policy and procedure to get that on the agenda as soon as possible. When it went through our legal review, the attorney did look at it and say, there's a couple pieces in here that violate our charter, because it calls for the council to create this. We can't do that. We can't have a resolution that violates our constitution, okay, which is our charter. But that's not the way it was portrayed to you tonight, okay? You've got a completely different side of that, and it had a lot of negativity added to it, so it sells well, okay? That is a tactic that we see a lot lately, okay? So, I don't want to sit here and address every single nuance, because I think we've had enough negativity today, but I'll tell you this. If you guys ever want to understand my side of it, feel free to email me. I'm happy to reply. I don't like this childish banter back up here. It doesn't have any place here in the city council. It really doesn't. And I've said this before, you know, I have a tough decision sometimes, do I just let things go, or do I stand up for myself? It's really tough, because when you're standing up for yourself, and you already got arrows thrown at you, it's really hard to go ahead and make it look like, no, that's not what happened, all right? And the last issue for today, I will comment, is I still stand behind my interpretation of the policies and procedures. If you guys listen to every time before we start citizen comments, I read the same paragraph every single time. That paragraph says very clearly, the clock will not be stopped. Once the three minutes are up, the three minutes are up. It says that. Now, I have taken this, and I'm going to send it over to my city attorney, and I'm going to have him give me his opine between what it says there and how it goes in the policies and procedures. If there's a conflict there, and I've interpreted incorrectly, I'll go ahead and jump on the sword, but the time to go ahead and scream and yell and start hollering at me about it isn't right here, okay? Because I just created more issues. Quite frankly, you have all, council members have all the time they want during their time to speak, okay? So, it was kind of a plug, right? So, just being honest and fair. Now, if I find out that I'm wrong, or the interpretation, mine was off, I'll jump on the sword, and I'm happy to do that publicly, but don't insult my leadership ability. I worked way too hard. I've led men in battle zones and everything else. I think I can handle running a council meeting, all right? So, that wasn't fair. All right. With that, I'd also like to thank all my veteran brothers and sisters for Veterans Day. Sorry I couldn't spend the day with you. Veterans Day was, obviously with COVID, it gets a little difficult to hang out, and we were getting our COVID tests, Lynda and I, so just because we didn't want to make sure that we'd be clear for the council meeting today, so that's how I spent my Veterans Day. I'd also like to thank all of my Marine Corps friends. Happy 245th birthday, which is November 10th, right before Veterans Day, so I hope you guys had a good and safe time as well. guys had a good and safe time as well. With, other than that, I want to congratulate my colleague, Councilman Godbout, on celebrating his anniversary of his 29th birthday this week. He'll be celebrating that.
[inaudible]
The anniversary of his 29th birthday. My wife will also be selling the anniversary of her 29th birthday this weekend, so happy birthday to both of you. And last, happy Thanksgiving. It's really tough, but really, kind of consider the, maybe not doing the big family gatherings this year. I know it hurts me. Thanksgiving's my favorite holiday of the whole year because I get to be around family, and it's, nothing's expected of me other than to cook and eat and have a good time. But this will be the first time we don't open the doors and have 15, 20 people in the house. It'll be rough, so I ask you guys to kind of consider the same thing, kind of control the spread, because we all kind of want to get back to regular, whatever that means anymore, as soon as possible. So if we can kind of do something proactive on our side, that'd be great. So thank you all for coming today. Oh, the last thing. I do expect, I'm going to be doing some research on the governor's new orders and how that might impact our council meetings here for the remainder of the year. I don't have an answer for you today. I'm doing some research. I hope to have that out to you as soon as possible with what our next couple meetings may look like. We might have to go back to virtual. So, that is TBD at this point, but it's something I wanted to figure out and get taken care of as soon as possible. So thank you again for coming out. Thank you to all my colleagues. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you.